Is upon us, we're going to begin our special city council meeting for today. It's Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. So we appreciate you all making it out this evening. So this is specific for there's only one item on the agenda this evening regarding the comprehensive plan. Adoption in that regards, and so we do look forward to hearing from staff as well as from the public in regards to this. This has been taking place for quite some time now, probably close to a year, if not over. With the number of public meetings that have been had already and getting feedback from the community. So this is the culmination of all those efforts and all that work into that regard. So I guess we should start with a roll call, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Clerk.
Council Doughty.
Here.
Council Stoddick.
Here.
Council Register.
Here.
Council Williams.
Here.
Council Augen.
Here.
Council Denver.
Here. Very good, thank you so much, all city council members are present and accounted for. So with that, we'll just jump right into it, and we'll turn the time over to staff for their presentation regarding this comprehensive plan. Proposal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Morgan Besaw, Planning and Zoning Staff. I will be presenting the new comprehensive plan and future land use map update to you this evening for a little intro. And then I'll be handing it over to our consultants from Logan Simpson, who have joined us this evening to do the bulk of the plan.
Can I interject just real quick? Sorry, so just for councils, so I did a talk with staff. So for questions, it's preferable to hold those questions until after staff has presented and the consultants. So I'd recommend if you do have a question that pops up to just make a note of that, so you don't forget it, obviously. And then we'll kind of try to cover all those questions after the consultants present this. It's the wish of staff.
Thank you, that sounds great, I think that I'll just be doing a small intro. So they will probably be able to answer the majority of your questions when they go through the plan in its entirety. So to begin, staff would like to enter into the record a couple of modifications to the document that was sent out to you. That have been, that will be presented tonight based on further staff review and comments received from the public since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The example density in Neighborhood One in your packet had errors in the math, which have since been corrected to accurately reflect the three units per acre when using conservation area development. Second, the word easement and conservation easement development has been modified to reference conservation area development. This is to allow more flexibility with how that conservation code will be written, because we're not adopting that program tonight. It'd be a code amendment in the future, and we just want to have a little bit more flexibility in how you choose to have that code adopted, if you so choose. On page seven, the graphic for agricultural jobs has been updated to reflect the actual number of jobs, either directly or indirectly related to agriculture. And finally, on the future land use map, in the highlighted section that you can see on the screen, the map has been updated to change the mixed use land use designation along Simplot Boulevard. From South Kit Avenue west to Wagner Road to an employment center land use designation. Alright, so how did we get here? As the mayor mentioned, this process began some time ago in 2022 and 2023. As we all started to see that the majority, if not all of the land use applications that were making the way to council included comprehensive plan amendment applications with them. This many requests for an amendment is evident that the current plan is no longer working in the way that it should be. And it no longer aligns with the overall vision and goals of the community, nor is the plan adapted to the changing circumstances that the market is demanding. So the city council requested and supported an update to the comprehensive plan. An RFP was issued and a consultant was selected. And the process began in October of 23 formally, with the first public survey launched in November of 2023. And since that time, we've been doing multiple online surveys, public events, open houses and workshops. And the consultant will get into all that and show the full public participation process in their presentation. Additionally, many agency partners, community members and organizations were notified throughout the process. But it's important to note that as part of this process, the city created a comprehensive plan committee as well. This committee consisted of representatives from Southwest District Health, Valley Regional Transit, Idaho Power, the College of Idaho Development Community, both school districts, Destination Caldwell. With representatives as well from the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, the county, and several others as you see on your screen. The committee worked as an advisory committee to staff and the consultants in helping shape how this plan turned out based on public comment and feedback that was received. Other partners included representatives from our surrounding communities, as well as internal departments throughout the city. Now, what is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan is a long range planning document that sets forth the vision and goals for future land uses and development, and provides recommendations for guiding that development. The future land use map or comprehensive plan map shows the boundary of the planning area, along with the desired future uses within an area. A comprehensive plan map is not meant to be parcel specific and show what each individual parcel should be doing. It is a guide to help plan for future growth and is meant to have some flexibility so long as the overall vision and intent is being met. It's important to note that a comprehensive plan and future land use map is not a policy or codified document, like a zoning map or the zoning ordinance or code. It does provide recommendations for creating policy or ordinance to help augment the vision and goals. But to implement this vision, future code amendments need to be adopted by city council. What does that mean? It means that even if council adopts this plan tonight, staff will need to bring back code amendments for consideration and adoption, both to P and Z and to city council. In order to implement any recommendations, policies or goals in this plan. So to summarize a few high level highlights of the plan, there were changed land use designations from the current map. Along the Boise River on the south to allow for retail, restaurant housing and other mixed use projects instead of industrial. We heard a lot of feedback from the project about wanting to better utilize these areas along the river. There are new mixed use designations along the major corridors such as 2026 Middleton near the airport, Highway 19 and Caldwell Boulevard. This will redirect higher density projects into these appropriate centers where major transportation corridors already exist. There is a new community center designation along Eustick, along the border of Nampa at Madison and along 55. To allow for the provision of non-residential land uses to serve the surrounding residential neighborhoods. An enlarged boundary of downtown to extend over the railroad tracks to Chicago and west to Painter with a small section extending to Shaver Avenue. And finally, created additional areas for larger lot residential as shown in green on the comp plan map. The minimum size of lots in the areas closest to the county would be one acre in size. With parcels closer to the city limits being a minimum of half an acre of size. Of course, those specifications of the size of the lots are in the code. But that is what the green area is recommending in the neighborhood one is low density, large lots to help transition. We had a lot of feedback from the public about wanting to pay attention to these transition areas from city to county. Huh? Just the very next slide, public hearing notifications? Okay, so as with all land use applications, all agencies were notified. The only one to submit comments was Canyon County and all their comments have been addressed and reflected in the plan. So far as public comments, we have received 19 letters or emails in support. So all these comments that I'm talking about right now were after the application was distributed. These are the comments that we received specifically for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and city council hearings. There was a lot of public participation throughout the process, but I'm only highlighting the comments right now that we received on the final draft plan, the final map, once it was noticed. So we received 19 letters or emails. Two were fully in support of the plan with the remainder in opposition to specific portions of the plan that affected them. Most comments fell into two categories, actually really quick before I start going through those. I'm going to read two more comments that were received this afternoon into the record before I forget. So the first was from Ms. Dietrich to the Honorable Mayor and City Council Members and everyone involved. Thank you and all the city, thank you to you and all the city planners and other experts who've worked diligently on the new comprehensive plan for growth in Caldwell. As our city has grown so quickly, I am truly proud of those who have worked diligently to always try to do what is best for everyone. We have a great place to live and I'm thankful for everyone working together on this. And a second letter that was received today. Good morning, I have so appreciate the breadth and depth of public engagement opportunities offered for the last many, many months around updating the city comprehensive plan. The methods and outcomes define how the public process should work. Thank you all and special thanks to Director Collins and staff who've worked tirelessly. So those were the two letters that were received today. Regarding the letters in your packet, as I said, two, most of them fell into two categories. There were those that desired an increase in density and intensity of uses along Farmway moving west to the county. And the second was, a lot were focused with specific development that was proposed in a neighborhood three zone. So we had worked in partnership with Nampa and Canyon County to ensure that our proposed land use designations were compatible with their future land uses. As I mentioned, the county was the one to submit comments and they've been addressed regarding the density and intensity along Farmway. Those comments were considered by staff and the consultants at length. In the end, the map that before you today is based on balancing those comments with the other public comments that we received during the process about preserving. Larger lots on the periphery of the city and transitioning to the county. The comments of concern related to neighborhood three were due to a neighborhood meeting that was recently held for proposed development that has since submitted an application. So we cannot discuss that specific application this evening. However, at that neighborhood meeting, it was mentioned that the city was getting ready to adopt a new plan. However, that project is not dependent on this comp plan adoption, and it can develop as proposed under the existing comp plans. I just wanted to make that clear because there was a lot of comments about it in your packet. In general, however, the neighborhood three areas are very limited, and they were designated intentionally based on access to city services and proximity to major corridors in the city. So that was the bulk of the comments that we received in writing that are in your packet. But some comments we've heard in this last week leading up to this hearing, I wanted to touch on as well. One comment that we received this week was that the new comp plan is increasing density by 400%. So regarding that 400% comment, nowhere in here are we increasing density by 400%. R1 is the only area which is increasing in density, and we will show you that table on the next slide. All other zones will remain the same as what is currently permitted, with some zones showing a decrease in the density allowed. As I said, I'll show that on the next slide. The second comment I have, the new comp plan is going to allow tall buildings next to my single family home. Well, the comp plan is a guide and basically says that the vision is that some buildings might be a certain height. However, height will be regulated by city code as it is today. So we currently have safeguards in place for maximum building height when next to residential. Next to single family residential currently in place is. Sorry, Morgan. You're right, I was on the wrong slide, so. Apologize, I got distracted. So we currently have a code in place right now that if you have a. Non-single family use coming into a sink next to a single family use, it's capped at 25 feet in height. That's not going to change, so the comp plan doesn't change that, it doesn't change the codes that we have in place. Number three, we don't want high density development next to our neighborhood, but we do want affordable housing. Well, we all know that it's impossible to have attainable housing for every, for a variety of income levels unless you allow projects to have a variety of densities. The densities being proposed in this comprehensive plan for low and medium density residential areas are not high density, but will be for, they are medium and low density. But they'll be further restricted by the permitted uses in code, which do not allow for multifamily developments within these zones. So in essence, two single family residential subdivisions next to each other could come in as the same type of land use, i.e. single family residential. But one could have more housing units than the other, because they could have different densities. Four, will this make it easier for developers to get things approved without going to council? No, the adoption of this plan does not change which applications have to be heard by the council or not. That's all dictated by code. Five, where are the specifics for development and or percentages of land uses, et cetera? All the specifics are within the code. So this is a visioning document, it's high level vision. If you want specifics, they are in the current code and they will be coming forward in potential code amendments if the council chooses to adopt them to bring the code more in alignment with this plan. Staff is working on some drafts that we could bring before you, and tentatively they might come before council in March. That would help implement the vision of this plan, but it would all be up to the council to approve those in the future. Now, to get into density. As part of our introduction, staff does want to touch on a couple of things we heard from the public recently as a concern. Please note that the topic of density was not the primary concern brought forward by the majority of people who participated in our public outreach process. Needless to say, though, we still feel it's important to clarify some of those concerns. Density does not equate to less attractive neighborhoods, nor does it necessarily equate to multifamily development. Increased density can mean small patio homes or cottage court development. For example, we have a lot of historic residential neighborhoods near Cleveland, near the college. These are primarily single family detached neighborhoods, but they average about eight dwelling units per acre, just for food for thought. What types of housing are permitted in a zone is identified in the code, it's not just the density that allows that. As I said, we were going to get in some real specifics here with density. So here are the details from the draft comp plan regarding density. In the green column is what is allowed today with our code. And in the purple is what the comp plan is proposing to have for a base density. The city's existing densities are located in the current comprehensive plan. An adoption of this plan would change the base densities in the city. While the base densities are reflected within chapter two, the plan would be adopted. The density bonuses that you may have seen within chapter two would not be adopted tonight. And they would require code amendments by council in the future. The city does not currently have a density bonus program. And so for those densities to be able to be utilized by developers in the future, the council would have to create a density bonus program. So just looking at the purple, which would be the base densities that are in the comp plan. That could be adopted if you chose to adopt the plan tonight. These are proposing density ranges depending on location, and they're not based only on zoning designation. So it allows for higher densities within the more urbanized areas of Caldwell to help prevent small sprawl and to preserve agricultural lands. With semi-rural and more rural densities as you get closer. To the primitive of our planning area. With higher density areas, it's proposing low to medium densities within residential areas, but relocating that high density along major roadways and transportation corridors. As you can see from the base density table on the screen, a reduction in the current allowed densities within city are being proposed with the exception of low density residential. In the neighborhood two designation. This is to allow for a wider variety of housing types and to capture the missing middle housing that may be more attainable to a larger number of residents. This chart, so the purple on the previous screen is now gray. So the proposed base densities are in green and the proposed density bonuses, which would not be adopted tonight, but our recommendations are in blue. As mentioned, adopting this plan tonight would not adopt those densities in blue. To adopt those densities, the council would have to adopt a new code with a density bonus program. But we did want to include it tonight as it is a recommendation within the comprehensive plan. While the largest density increase, if the density bonus program were to be implemented would be in the R1 zone. The majority of the other zones show little increase, most remaining the same with or with slight decreases in the permitted density. The other thing to mention about the density bonus is right now in the city, if someone wants to increase their density, they apply for a PUD. And the city has very little control over what they're getting in return for that PD. It's a little bit extra open space and some amenities. If the city council were interested in adopting a density bonus program, they could put very, very, very specific criteria in that program to have a lot more control. Over when they permitted additional density. Okay, so to summarize, the city's existing densities are located in the comprehensive plan. Adoption of this plan would change the base densities in the city. While the base densities are reflected in chapter two, the density bonuses would not be adopted tonight and would require further code amendments by council. And well, I think I already talked about the PUD. In summary, the only two designations that have a proposed change in density are the residential estates, which is the very top. These are the two that are highlighted in red, residential estates, Neighborhood One currently prevents two units per acre. The base density is proposed at two units per acre. The density bonus program, although for that particular one, it's more of a conservation area bonus. Would allow three dwelling units per acre, which is a 50% increase, but they must do a conservation. Conservation preservation in some fashion. To preserve that open space. And as well in the low density R1 residential zone, there's proposed increase from six to eight for the base density or up to 12 in a density bonus program.
Morgan, can I just jump in real quick, I just want to add one thing. On that residential estates where she talked about the conservation area. It's of note that with that recommendation, they're recommending when you preserve that, that open space for agricultural or open use. It's 40% of the acreage, which is pretty large. So I think that makes a big difference within that area that you have to preserve 40% open space.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, yes.
So it can never be built on. So this comprehensive plan was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 8th, and they did make a recommendation of approval to city council. With one condition that we provide more information on the proposed density bonus program to council, which is why we're really making sure to cover it tonight. And I believe that our consultants are going to touch on it as well. So with that, I would like to hand it over to Logan Simpson to get into the bulk of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Miriam McGilvray. I work for a planning and design firm called Logan Simpson, which was hired on to help facilitate the update of this comprehensive plan. This is one of, I mean, as a planner by trade, it's exciting for me to see this to completion. It's a very exciting process to be a part of and important in that it is a guiding document. That shows the, the direction that the community is hoping to take Caldwell in the next 10 to 20 years. I'll probably cover quite a bit that Morgan has already touched on so thoroughly. But I will try to stay a little bit high level to get through the bulk of the plan. Kind of walking you through what this new comprehensive plan content is. So just as a reminder, we're tasked with updating the 2040 comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2020. And this was really to align with community values, community needs and recalibrate the direction based on recent growth. Our process was separated into three phases. I don't know where I'm pointing this, sorry. Thank you. Three-phase process over the last 18 months. So foundation was our first phase where we really brought out to the public our visioning outreach, which was a really intensive exploration with the public to think about big ideas. We also did an audit of the current comprehensive plan, and we embarked on a pretty extensive existing conditions analysis to understand the, the data analysis, the trends that are happening not only locally within Caldwell, but regionally that are affecting the community. Phase two was talking really more into opportunities and choices, thinking about trade-offs and benefits in terms of going different directions, looking at the priorities for the community, particularly with workshopping the future land use plan. And then into phase three, translating all of that great feedback that we've heard from the public, workshopping with our steering committee or our comprehensive plan committee and pulling that into a firm draft plan. I would, you know, I want to just reiterate that this, this process was not only engaging the public. We had great updates and engagement with planning and zoning. We did updates to this board council. And we also have a team of experts on our consultant side that helped look at transportation, economic development, urban design, and different financial tools to consider. Of course, the comprehensive plan committee was really a great tool to bounce ideas off of, understand community priorities, interpret what we were hearing from the public a little bit more thoroughly, understanding the nuances of what's happening and could happen into the future with Caldwell. So into the public engagement piece of this process, it was integrated throughout the, the three phases here. We kicked off with the first questionnaire, as Morgan mentioned, in November of 2023, and a series of one-on-one and group interviews with the public. That reached almost 60 people just with those focus groups and interviews.
So please refrain from any comments during the presentation.
So those listening sessions and the online questionnaire, how we kicked off the process, followed pretty quickly with our visioning outreach, which was a three-day, a three-day series of events where we did a number of pop-up events. We did, had a hub at the train depot for two days. We had conversations with, in the schools, we went to Lincoln Elementary. We had a secondary questionnaire following those events. We did site visits, and we heard from a lot of people in different types of situations. So we did, we walked to the plaza, handing out lots of flyers, really trying to spread the word that this process was starting to get involved. It'll be, you know, another year process, trying to build the motivation or the momentum to really engage with, with this planning process. The result was pretty tremendous feedback during that week. At those planning hubs at the train station, we had an illustrator who was illustrating the ideas that we were hearing from the public live so that people could really visualize their ideas on paper. And those illustrations have made it into the plan, as you, as you might have seen, to really help understand the different aspects of what a streetscape looks like, different components of neighborhoods, and how we want to integrate different types of uses. The outcome of those visioning events were a vision document, which was a preliminary summary of those ideas that were summarized into five vision themes, which have actually continued into the plan as we dig deeper into the goals and policies and the land use components. Following the visioning, we did have community choices and priorities events and engagement online. Admittedly, this was a little bit disappointing in attendance at those events. The questionnaire number three was done in tandem online with the in-person events. And we also followed up with an online review of a draft land use chapter in its entirety later that fall so that people could understand and really workshop and view some of the draft ideas that were being put, being recommended. Following that, community choices and priorities, we had a full draft plan pulled together later that fall. And our public comment period was November, December. And some of the, the major outcomes, we saw 96 online comments. We had collected written 41 event comments. We did quite, quite an extensive review also with staff and other city departments to make sure that plans were speaking the same language and making sense. And so we actually made 258 minor revisions, which included map edits, language clarifications, and graphic updates, which is exactly what we were hoping for. Having a draft plan put out to the public, we do want to make sure that we are receiving and comments to make it the best plan that it can be. So the comprehensive plan process and structure not only includes public input. As I mentioned in phase one, we did a data analysis and existing conditions. So the public input existing conditions go into and feed into what the structure of the plan is, which is overall a vision values, then we have goals and policies within those. And then two important tools of the comprehensive plan are both the actions and strategies, so how you implement the plan, as well as the land use map and its descriptions. So the organization of this plan is non-traditional in that it is organized around those five vision themes as those goals and policy chapters. So chapter, I'll, I'll go through each chapter individually, but I want you to see how it kind of all fits together. So in addition to the eight chapters that we have in the, the body of the plan, we also have eight appendices, so another 300 pages or so of really supportive material, including the existing conditions report, a health conditions assessment, retail economic development studies, an engagement summary. These are all really robust appendices and information that supported the direction of this plan. So with that, I will go through each of the chapters and the contents, but stay at a high level and can certainly answer any detailed questions when I'm finished. So chapter one introduces the plan, why we plan, what the purpose of it is, and how to use the plan. It also highlights some existing conditions, what is the context that we're planning under, the legal precedents, and it also highlights the vision. So we have a vision statement and those five vision themes, which is really the guiding compass of this comprehensive plan. And it really introduces that aspirational vision and embodies the community's priorities. The city received a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Idaho to integrate health into this process. So not only will you see some callouts throughout the, the plan itself, always kind of harking back to what are the health benefits of certain policy decisions, but there's also a pretty significant health conditions assessment in appendix with some really interesting maps. Chapter two goes into, is our, our land use chapter. And I won't go into the details of, of Morgan's updates in terms of the major changes to, to certain land uses here, but there is a kind of an introductory section here that tells you how to use the future land use plan. And then it goes into a detail of all the place types, it has a future land use map, and it has a section on special areas. So this plan does have quite a bit more detail about the place types than the current comprehensive plan, in so much that we are looking at, how do we characterize different areas of, of Caldwell? Not replacing zoning, but in terms of providing enough guidance that staff and, and city leaders could implement a code change if they wanted to, to look a little bit more specifically. But it does not get into the details of setbacks necessarily, and certainly doesn't restrict height, you'd all have to look at the, the code for those level of detail. There is some graphics in there, including a guidance on what primary uses, supporting land uses would be appropriate in different areas of the community. And then I'll go just quickly through each of our place types. So this is our lowest-density neighborhood one, really as a transitional area between the city, urban-level services and the county. It really emphasizes the mix of farmland and large-lot homes. As Morgan mentioned, it does have a suggestion for conservation area development option if implemented and adopted by code later. Neighborhood two is really a suburban-style neighborhood and includes most of the city. It allows a, a mix of, variety of, of housing types and is intended to really provide a flexibility for that missing middle, but largely suburban-style development. Neighborhood three is technically our highest neighborhood density, but is really intended just to provide the flexibility of different housing types. So it doesn't prevent single-family options necessarily, but allowing the flexibility that you can make, would be able to, to see along our major corridors. Urban neighborhood is intended to support the historic neighborhoods around downtown, the college, and east of downtown, really, these are established neighborhoods. And so that the height and the densities really are to reflect current conditions largely and support that level of, or that type of character in those areas. Community center is really serving a community scale of mixed-use and commercial uses following major streets, really to help service the neighborhood surrounding them and the ability for mixed use. And then the mixed-use center is really more of a regional-scale commercial mixed-use designation. And you'll find that mostly along the highway and, well, I-84 and, and 2026. Downtown, as Morgan mentioned, we have expanded those boundaries a little bit across the railroad. It really is intended to support a vibrant mixed-use heart of, of Caldwell, knowing that downtown really is a special place. The employment center category and place type encompasses areas around the airport and north off of I-84. It's important to reserve areas for light industrial office, non-residential uses in any community. So while we've pared back a little bit the land use for industrial areas specifically, we want to make sure that we're not getting rid of it completely, because it is an economic benefit to have in the city. The special-purpose place type really is a special purpose. So what we're looking at is the airport, the college, county buildings, and the hospital. You know, these are areas that don't fit in a certain, they're, they're unique, really, and need to be thought through largely on a case-by-case basis. So this is the future land use map, it's hard to fit on a, on a screen here. But I just wanted to call out, you know, this is intended to provide flexibility, guidance, and, and a little bit more control for the county, or for the city, excuse me. And I want to remind everyone that this is intended to be a living plan, so updated as needed in the future with market changes, community priorities changing. Nothing is set in stone, this really is intended to, to show a, a, be a compass for the community and a guide for how we generally want to characterize our development into the future, but certainly is not something that should be considered set in stone. Additionally, in chapter two, we have a section categorizing special areas around town. This includes key corridors, key gateways, historic sites and districts, downtown. And we also align this with the new event center district and that plan that was adopted last year. Chapters three through seven, again, are those vision themes that go into specific goals and policies. So the first one here, a connected community, really focuses on all modes of transportation. Sorry that the formatting didn't show up correctly here. These are supposed to be the, the goals here. It covers safety, connectivity, utility, and infrastructure improvements on right-of-ways, and really looking at how we are connecting physically in our trails and, and roads. Chapter four is vibrant gathering space, and the emphasis, emphasis here is really how do we create special places in Caldwell? This touches into urban design and how we are building out our spaces, looking at our historical resources, really what makes, what makes a place special and what should we make sure that we're retaining to, to keep it special into the future. Chapter five, where rivers, parks, and agriculture meet. Not only did we hear the importance of transitioning and retaining that connection with agriculture to the west, but this really highlights what we've heard from the community, which is that the Boise River, Indian Creek corridor, these are real assets for the community. And so the direction that we've pulled, pulled into this plan are how do we, how do we benefit from those? How can we build in parks and green belts and recreation facilities that are all connecting residents to these assets that we have in town? This section also touches on making sure that we are, you know, safeguarding our environmental features, including how to minimize threats to hazards and a focus on trails and non-motorized pathways. It builds also on the draft parks plan. Some work was done last, last year on that, so I'm kind of building on the, the good work there. And then chapter six, a quality neighborhood to call home. This really should be paired with, all of these sections really should be paired with the future land use plan, but in particular, this is to encourage housing options that would meet current and future needs. So whether it's transitioning densities out into the county, focusing a different variety of housing types within and close to services. The goals here really are to be able to provide housing to those who need it in, in the price points or the, the lifestyle that, that people are looking for. Chapter seven is where you'll see most of the economic development goals as it relates to the employment centers in the future land use map and as well as our special places, right? So the, the airport, downtown, and how do you, how do you make our mixed-use areas, our commercial centers that we've had and we've designated in our land use map something special and vibrant? So those are the, the vision, goals, and policies chapters going into implementation, which is the bookend of the plan. We do have a series of small recommendations to implement. Again, it's, it's all, you know, based on public will and, and what happens in terms of code updates and, and that kind of thing in terms of implementation of these, this guidance. But for instance, and you can't see it on your screen, but number one here was to develop some new plans and studies which could include a downtown master plan, historic preservation plan, or parks, pathways, and open space plan. This chapter also includes how to monitor and update the plan, so looking at the amendment process, compliance and development review. And then again, there's a, a key recommendations or key strategies here, but also an overview of some of the tools and resources that the city has at its disposal. but also an overview of some of the tools and resources that the city has at its disposal. So I know Morgan went into pretty detail about this density bonus program, but I just want to reiterate that it is a program that would need to be developed from city staff and a code perspective and would generally replace that plan unit development or PUD process by providing the city with a tool that allows the city to ask for more from developers. So in order to develop and actually utilize a density bonus program, first city staff would draft it for you, including the eligibility criteria, the thresholds, the community benefits of what a new project could receive additional density for potentially. That draft ordinance would then be presented to the city leadership and would include a public hearing. And then ultimately, if that was something that the community or city council wanted to move forward with, it would be adopted by ordinance. Some of the criteria or ideas that we were putting into this plan as a recommendation to consider building into the bonus program include housing type mix, affordable housing, connectivity, public transportation, gathering spaces, and open space, urban design, architectural design, resiliency standards, or accessible units. So a lot of great ideas were brought up by the public and through this process of it would be great if we could have more affordable housing. It would be great if we had more connectivity. It would be great if we had X, Y, Z. And this would be a tool for the city really to have developers help implement, help provide. And it's a program that if, well, as we, as city staff develops, city leadership and the public can really set out, like what are our priorities? What do we want to get back from developers as a benefit for potential density bonuses? Okay, another eight appendices. I will not go through these with you, but there's some great information there. The implementation action plan is a table of some of those immediate or long-term strategies and actions that the city can start working towards, including developing the density bonus program and drafting it. The existing conditions report has a lot of great data, kind of a snapshot in time. I mentioned the health conditions assessment, looking at different health metrics. The retail and economic development study was a request of the economic development department. Community engagement summary goes through a lot more detail than I went through certainly, or that is in the chapter of the plan in terms of what we heard, who we heard from, and the the results from the community surveys and the public engagement. Attorney general's regulatory takings checklist. This is standard for Idaho communities to protect private property rights. And then capital improvement plan, just as they've already been adopted in the appendix H. So with that, I want to thank you again for letting me spew all this at you tonight. It really has been a joy to work with the Caldwell community, and I'm excited for what you can do with this plan. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, and I think the majority of the questions probably go to staff. Is that correct? And obviously the consultants available to answer as well. We appreciate you being here and for that presentation. So with that, who wants to light their mic up first? I imagine there's at least a few questions. Yeah, for staff, yep. So I think that concludes the presentation, correct? So yep, so we'll jump into questions from council for staff. Council register.
I thought there might be more than just me. So I just want, I wanted to clarify what the employment land use zone was.
Give me just a second. Let me pull that up on my screen. So we can see what that entails.
And would that be like with that slide that was shot that Morgan showed?
Yeah, in the beginning, Morgan mentioned that that had been included over there. I was just kind of curious what that meant. Yeah, the employment center.
Yeah. So mayor and council register, yes. So in that area, we have recommended that that go to employment center. In the employment center, your primary uses would be industrial, office, flex office warehouse, transportation and utilities. And then your supporting land uses would be institutional facilities, like your government, hospitals, those types of things, schools. Personal services, restaurant, commercial, retail, and mixed use.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I should have started out with even, you know, that I think everybody knows that we don't always see eye to eye on expansion in Caldwell and, you know, big growth, but I do want to say that I think that you guys are constantly professional and this is just a nice presentation, whether I agree with everything or not. But I did see a lot of requests for open houses and all that kind of stuff. And I really appreciate the community being drawn into that. And it is kind of up to them if they want to come and express those things. So I do appreciate that, but then I have some more questions, but I just wanted to let you know that. I do think you did a really nice job here, all of you.
Thank you.
Do you, do you by any chance know what, on the homes that we have built right now, do you by any chance know what the occupancy rate is or how many of those homes are empty as we stand? I don't expect, I don't know if you'll know that, and I just thought of this question on the way over here.
Yeah, mayor and council register, I know, and I apologize, I know you've had that request recently for us to do that report. It's a very challenging report to do because we have to manually do it because our software doesn't allow us to automate it. We have, so I'm not even going to probably guess. I would say we've probably had, I guess I am going to kind of guess. I think we've probably had maybe over the last year, maybe 3,000 housing permits that have been applied for. I don't know off the top of my head if they've all been issued.
I think my question though, and I'm sorry, I might not be saying it right, is more that the developments that we have right now that are built, you know how many of those have all been sold? The houses have all been sold, or how many of those houses are still empty?
I don't. I'm sorry, but we could probably get some numbers from the Realtors Association.
Okay, that's, I just was wondering. And I do think that an updated plan is necessary. I just want to make sure that it fits Caldwell and that we're not trying to overdo it too much to be like Nampa or Boise or Meridian or anything like that. So with that, do we have a plan on how to protect our agriculture and those areas from the sprawl of the boundaries, I guess?
Yeah, so mayor and council register, as Morgan kind of mentioned, we are trying to bring more of the density to incentivize developers to bring those more dense neighborhoods into the core of the city where services are more available. But what that does when you start bringing that density into your core is it allows you to prohibit sprawl on the outs, from your city expanding out, and instead you're infilling and you're building up what's already there. So that's what we're trying to encourage with this plan. And in doing so, as you'll see in that neighborhood one area on the map where it's green, where it's your lowest density area where they talked about, that's wherein those were also encouraging, you know, that conservation area development where they would have to preserve 40% of that area for open space or ag land that could never be built on. And we've added a lot, I can't remember how much acreage it is, but it's a lot of acreage that we added into that green area. Plus, our existing plan, our planning boundary currently goes all the way out to chicken dinner. We've pulled that all the way back to Wagner, which is thousands of acres that we're allowing to not come into the city and be preserved for the agricultural out in the county.
Okay. So one of the biggest things that I saw that kind of stood out to me was that on the multi-housing, there was an administrative rule, I guess. I'd have to go back and find the page, or actually, I think it might be in the handout that you gave us. Let me see if I can find the exact one. Do you know what I'm talking about? Okay. Says here. Okay. Under the R3 high-density residential zones, this is on the handout that you gave us with the red writing. It says multifamily seven or more is an admin review. And so I was wondering, does that mean that those multifamilies in, what is the admin review? So those, would council not see apartment buildings anymore coming to us, or is that only for?
Mayor and council register, so that particular handout I gave you, that right now, that doesn't have anything to do with the comp plan because those are going to be code changes that we're going to come talk to you about. And that is in there because that's a question that we want to ask council, because I believe a workshop ago, there was a particular council member, I believe it might have been Councilor Allgood, but I'm not sure, that said there might be certain things that the council doesn't need to see and certain things that we still want to see. And so the question that we want to have with council when those code amendments come forward is with our multifamily development code that we'll be proposing, is multifamily still something that you would like to see? And so that's not a hard, anything adopted right now? That's a discussion topic that we will have here in the next month.
Okay. So then with the density. So I just want to be clear that when we were talking about the Verbena project when they came through, one of the things I think I heard every council say was they were concerned about the density in the smaller lot sizes. And when we discussed that, Joe had said that if this plan had been in effect, the only thing they would have needed was the annexation and they could have built on those smaller lot sizes. Is that still the case?
Mayor and council register, not necessarily, because there's two components that go with density. So you have your density, but you also have your minimum lot size. So we had this discussion earlier today, like within your neighborhood two in this plan, it's recommending the eight dwelling units per acre and then up to 12. But with our minimum lot size in our code at 8,000 square feet, it's going to be impossible for anybody to do eight dwelling units per acre in an R1 zone. So they would have to come back to council and ask for a rezone. So with Verbena, for instance, if they wanted to do those smaller lot sizes in the new comp plan, they would still have to go through that plan unit development process if they were going to be zoned R1.
Okay. Okay, because I do, I do think that some developers respect those smaller lot sizes and have some really good ideas, like the project we're seeing at Fifth Chicago, that kind of thing, but I just am not sure. I'm nervous about giving away free rein to stuff like that in our neighborhoods, I guess.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to throw this in there because we had talked about this a little bit internally, that as we start looking at these densities within the comp plan, like even if we were to look at the density bonus program at that time, council could certainly say, I don't want to do density bonuses in these zones. Or you could say, we might be open to that, but we want them to be an SUP at a council level because we want to see them. So you have a lot of authority to see those projects and make those decisions.
Okay. And then I guess some of the other concerns that I heard were that in some of the older neighborhoods that they could, you know, like somebody sells their house, they can, whoever it is buys it, they can tear it down and then put up permitted uses, which could be an apartment building. This is just some of the questions that I've had, similar to like the lot over there by the library that is just a permitted use right up against the historical district. So are there safeguards in place where they wouldn't be able to just buy a home and demolish it and put up an apartment building in the middle of a neighborhood?
Mayor and council register, it depends on what the zone is. I mean, if you're talking like an R1 zone and they have a house on it and they demolish it and want to do apartments, that would not be a permitted use in an R1 zone. And that's a code. It comes out of the code. So they would have to ask for a rezone to do apartment buildings, or they would have to, currently with our PUD, you can come in and ask, you can do a PUD. So depending on how large the lot is, right? If they qualify for a PUD, you could do that and you can have 30% non-permitted uses. Now, in follow-up to that, as part of this comp plan, when we come back with future code amendments, we're going to do away, or we're going to at least recommend to council that we do away with allowing any future density increases through a PUD. If you're going to do a density increase, you have to do it through the density bonus program that council's approved. You can't come ask for more waivers through a PUD, so we want to get rid of those waivers. Now, they could still ask for a lot-size waiver, but they'd still have to meet the density. But again, that would be council's discretion to approve or deny that.
Okay, so then I guess the last question I have, just to sort of follow up with that, is and I'm not a planner, so I don't mean to sound dumb or anything. I'm just trying to make sure that I got it. Do you know how many areas or parts of the city or zones or whatever where there's outright use right now for, let's use multifamily? So outright use right now versus how many will be if we adopt this? Does it, how much it increases to have those outright uses without approval?
Planning and zoning, Morgan Bisaw. I'm going to try to answer it, then tell me if I didn't understand the question correctly. Adopting this would not change where it's a directly permitted outright use, because as we mentioned, that's in the code. And adopting this comprehensive plan does not rezone any land in the city. Every parcel will be the same zone tomorrow that they are today. So it doesn't rezone anything and it doesn't change the permitted uses.
Okay. So what you're saying is that if we want to, if for all those rezones later, they would come back later, not part of this? This is just to give sort of this guide of where?
Exactly. This will provide the options for what zones they could choose to rezone if they wanted to rezone.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Stodick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think most of, what I have is probably comments based on feedback that that I've got from taxpayers and homeowners and some of the concerns I have. First of all, when you went to these certain groups, I didn't notice anybody that was invited from the ag industry, like the seed folks, spud folks, sugar beet folks. I didn't see any committees from any ag groups, and that concerns me. Were there any?
Mayor and Councilor Stodick, I don't think there was anything on the comp plan committee, but everybody was invited through the social media and, you know, like we didn't even put NAMA on our comp plan committee because you can get a committee that's too large and then they can't get anything done.
I was specifically concerned about the committees. That's what I was concerned.
Yeah, there was nobody on the committee except for Canyon County that was helping to represent the ag community.
Okay. And just a comment I have, I'm, if I see everybody in the audience, I don't see any county commissioners here, which concerns me also because, you know, we're partners in this thing and not to see them here, I don't think it's right. Okay, some of the complaints that I've had over the home state years I've been with the council, tall buildings, i.e. fourplexes, duplexes and all that that are next to single-family homes, and you can see right down into their backyards and everything. A typical example of that was off of South Florida in Carture. It's called Cedar Crossing Deluxe Town Homes, I think it's called. And when we first approved that, we had understanding with that contractor that he would put single-family duplexes budding up to the current subdivision that's there. But when they got down to the next street, which was straight east of there, they put in, I think it was two or three two-story apartments. And I called them on it, but they said the reason they could do that is because there was nothing in writing from the city that they couldn't. But I can remember the meeting and we had a gentleman's understanding that they would not do that. They'd be all duplexes. So I just want to make sure that in the future, we make sure we I just want to make sure that in the future, we, uh, make sure we get that stuff right. And that's not on you guys. I mean, that's something, we took somebody's word for it and they, they didn't do it, but these duplexes and fourplexes are taller buildings, for lack of better words, next to existing, uh, single-family dwellings is a big concern and I hope that somewhere in this whole plan, there's a lot to go through, I know, but, uh, that we, uh, definitely have a, a buffer zone in between those single-family backyards and the duplexes and the townhomes and all that. So anyway. Uh, regarding the, all the existing permits that we've approved, which it's anybody's guess because if you folks don't have the software, I understand that. But the last count we had was around eight or 9,000 doors, as they call them, that we still have approved, but haven't put in yet. Now, do they have to abide by the new comp plan or are they under the old comp plan? Whichever is decided.
Um, Mayor and Counselor Stodak, it depends. If they have already been before council for say a subdivision plat and they have a development agreement or they have approved, approved entitlements, they would be subject to that unless that plat expires or the development agreement expires. If they let it expire, then they would have to reapply and they would be under the current.
Okay. And the, uh, the time element is what, two years? Or what is the time element before they have to come back and and do something on the ground that they said they were going to do something on?
It's two years for plat expiration. But we've also put expirations in our development agreements where the city never used to have expirations. It's now five years in a development agreement. If there's been nothing completed on the site in five years, then their entitlements expire.
Okay. Uh, another complaint, too much density issues on each lot. In other words, we try and put too many homes on certain lots and I think you've addressed some of that in here, but we still have to be concerned about that. Another complaint is these new developments don't match existing developments that, that circle around, uh, you know, the developments that they want to put in. And I know we've talked about that before in some of the meetings, but it's, it still hasn't been, uh, abided by, uh, relative making sure that we match up, you know, existing ones with the new developments. So I'm hoping, I saw some of the stuff in here that might take care of that, but we want to make sure. And, uh, I don't know if Mr. McDonald is here, but, uh, I'll say again, I've never seen a traffic study yet that I believe because it seems like after two or three years, that traffic study just goes down the drain and it's, it, it just doesn't reflect of, of what the taxpayers have to put up with when we put these new developments in. Infrastructure services, you know, we're still so far behind on that too. And with these other eight or 9,000 doors going in, I think, again, we have to keep in mind that's a concern of ours too. And I think that's probably more under Mr. McDonald's umbrella, but still, it's when we go through these comp plans, we want to make sure that, uh, that we do address that issue. Other cities, I've been invited to several meetings, uh, at the Middleton City Council and they're really concerned about our expansion out south and, uh, east of, or west of here. Because a lot of the subdivisions that border, uh, their area, the overflow actually goes in some of their elementary schools and high schools too. So I know Mr. Doughty is part of that committee now of, uh, I don't know, there's probably eight or 10 cities involved with that, I believe, something like that. And, uh, you know, we have to keep in mind too, that whatever we put down there around 2026, that, you know, some of those folks, well, I want to go to Middleton and they don't have the room relative to the children and the high school kids that go there. And I know, you know, we've always, we've always addressed that issue by having the developers contact the various school districts, but there are exceptions to the rule. There's a few of them that have really stepped up the plate, a few developers and have paid a lot of money per door to build, uh, you know, new schools, but the majority of them have not. You know, a hundred dollars a door, $500 a door. Well, when you're talking about 50, 60 million dollars to build a new school, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket. So we, another, another item.
Yeah. And Counselor Stodak, just, uh, so you know the process on that, like if this plan goes into place and we are expanding our planning boundary toward Middleton, what will happen is Middleton will get notified every time there's a land use application, their school districts and their city, and they'll have the ability to comment on that.
So that's something new that we haven't done in the past, so?
We only do it if we're on the boundary right now. But we notify the city, but we haven't necessarily notified the school district, but where we're wanting to overlap our planning boundaries, we would start putting them, like we notify NAMA school district because we have some properties that are close to NAMA.
Okay.
So we would add them to that list.
Okay. And, uh, lastly, irrigation, you know, water is always an issue. A lot of people think that when they go down a, anywhere from 50 to 150 feet, they, they have a well. Well, that's not well, that's actually drainage from irrigation watering and sprinkling other crops and, and homes and grasses and all that. The aquifer is actually down 300 feet plus. So remember the issue that, uh, the county had south of Lake Lowell where they built those homes up on the ridge up there and a lot of the wells start going dry. And I just think that in our plan, we need to keep that in mind too. And I know Mr. McDonald and his group is working feverishly on that too with some of the subdivisions along Orchard and Tenth, but, uh, we need to keep that in mind too. So a lot of, a lot of good work. We, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Counselor Allgood?
Yeah, Robin. I kind of know the answer to this, but I want to, kind of want it on the record as well. You, you have in this, in this comp plan, we have a 50% reduction in multifamily or high-density residential and traditional neighborhood, um, from 40 units per acre to 20 units per acre and from 20 units an acre to 10 units an acre. What was the thinking when making that decision to move that direction?
Um, Mayor and Counselor Allgood, it was public comments. Um, we listened to the public about how they really had concerns about the much higher density multifamily products. And so with those comments, we, uh, the consultants recommended a density range for us based on those comments. And those density ranges just happened to be less than what our current comp plan addresses. And then in retrospect, in the, like the neighborhood two, which would be primarily in that R1 area, that density in the comp plan is showing an increase. And that's also due to, um, twofold, public comments, but then also the housing study where it said that we're really missing that more, that small, smaller product type to address the people that don't want those large lot residential, they don't want the maintenance. But then also that missing middle housing that we don't have in Caldwell to allow us to have a variety of housing to fit varying income levels and choices of what people want.
Okay. And just again, just so we're, everything's transparent. There's a number of references to all, uh, ADUs. What, what does that stand for again?
Accessory dwelling units.
Yeah. Could you kind of just give a brief, uh, description of what an ADU is?
Sure, sure. An accessory dwelling unit, you might hear it as a uh, separate mother-in-law quarters, a granny flat. Um, sometimes it's a, a dwelling unit on top of a garage, a detached structure where your college student lives. It could even be rented out though, I would say. But generally with an accessory dwelling unit, the homeowner has to live in one of those units. So they can't like rent them both out. So it has to be, the homeowner has to live on the site.
And, and those ADUs are allowed in uh, low-density and medium-density, is that correct?
Um, we will be proposing, so this comp plan doesn't tell you where accessory dwelling units would be permitted in future code amendments. Right now, accessory dwelling units are allowed in certain areas with yeah, some are directly permitted, some are special use permit. We as staff would like to recommend to council that, that accessory dwelling units be outright permitted anywhere where there's a single-family home. Now, the only restriction that we would be putting on those is in the historic district, they would have to go through that significant design review and that certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. And this last question, I don't know whether you have any information to answer this or not, but I hear conflicting information constantly about we don't have enough housing, housing is too expensive versus we have too many houses and they're sitting vacant. I don't know what, which to believe because I hear both regularly. Do you have any input on that?
Um, Mayor and Counselor Allgood, I, I wouldn't say I have any like most recent data as far as occupancy rates of current housing that's been built. I do know that when the consultants did the housing analysis and that was last year? Last year, they did find that we had a shortage of certain types of housing. And I think that is shown in that, kind of that arched graphic that's at the front of the comprehensive plan. And it breaks it down by income levels and the types of housing. Um, and they, they did find that we are short, um, some housing within the city and for the, the future.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, very good. Then we'll get into the public testimony. So, um, you will have three minutes for your testimony. So we do ask you to, um, so you'll see the time come up and there will be a beep buzzer at the end of your time. So we do ask you to, um, please respect that. Uh, we do have a number of people signed up. We want to make sure we get through everybody, provide them that opportunity. Um, so please be aware also of repetitive testimony. So if somebody does say uh, what you had on your mind, you can just say that I agree with that individual or person and then we can move on, on to the next. So uh, we do have two people signed up, the virtually, so we'll begin with them. Uh, V E Graves is the first person. And then also when you do come forward, if you could just state your name and then your address for the record as well. And I believe we have, um, V E Graves on line, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if you could just please state your name and then your address and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Ron Graves. Um, my address is 1126 Brightwater Lane, Boise. Uh, we're the owners of 120 acres at, um, 16263 Eustick Road, which we've owned since 1954. Um, having been born and raised in Caldwell, I commend Caldwell on what it has done over the last several years. You have brought the city back to life and it, it has vitality that it had when I was growing up. Overall, we support the comprehensive plan, but we have three comments. We believe that the density of neighborhood one should be increased to four dwelling units per acre to allow the commission more flexibility in its decision process. Secondly, we believe the western boundary of neighborhood two in the general area between Eustick Road and Longkey Lane and west of Farmway Road should be extended to the right-of-way of the Caldwell Deer Flat Canal, which is a natural geographical boundary line rather than the arbitrarily imposed line at 1,250 feet west of Farmway Road. And lastly, the concept of a density bonus has been mentioned in the plan, but it is without definition. And I know that you're going to be addressing that in the future, but we believe that when density bonus is ultimately defined in the code, the concept should be broadened to grant credit for public use such as parks, schools, as, um, Counselor Stodak mentioned, uh, municipal and other public uses rather than the narrow restriction such as an ag land conservation easement or low-income housing. Lastly, Caldwell is making a huge investment, constraining infrastructure along Farmway Road corridor. And the only way the city is going to recoup those costs is through development. Low-density zoning will discourage development and it's going to make it difficult to recoup those costs. We understand that there's an interest in maintaining a buffer between high-density development agricultural land, but allowing four dwelling units per acre instead of two is not high-density. Additionally, if the county is wanting a buffer, I question why is it considering residential notice within the agricultural area? Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Graves. Appreciate that. Um, do you mind staff just kind of commenting on some of the, the comments that he made, suggestions on that? Or the Robin or Morgan? Regards maybe of like the, with the Deer Flat, I'm looking at an area and I see the Deer Flat Canal that you had mentioned that does run north-south, uh, approximately a mile and a half or so, or maybe a mile west of Farmway Road. So maybe about why that's not utilized as a buffer than also about not having the increased density out there?
Sure. Um, so it's interesting that the recommendation was for, for DU per acre in the neighborhood one with the conservation area development. That was something that staff and the consultants looked at, um, and discussed. I think it was in one of the draft rounds that we had at one point. And the way the conservation area development is proposed is that you would take, at currently, if it were to be adopted with the current language, is that you would take your site as a whole, say 10 acres, and if you put 40% of it in conservation, then you could take the three dwelling units per acre or the four dwelling units per acre for the whole 10 acres and you could cluster it on the remaining 60% of the land. And so we started looking at the size that the lots would be because those zones, the RS1 and the RS2, only allow single-family residential. They wouldn't be allowing fourplexes. They wouldn't be allowing, um, townhomes either, I believe. So we started seeing, okay, well, how small would the lot have to be if you were doing four dwelling units per acre for the 10 acres? And then clustering it on the remaining 60%? And I think it got somewhere toward, ended up getting roughly six, ended up having a density of six dwelling units per acre, sort of like the size those lots would be. And it's obviously something council's able to consider. If you find that that is acceptable, we could definitely put it in there. Um, I think it was just modified at one point because we started thinking the lot sizes were going to get very, very small and hard to develop as single-family detached product. Um, regarding the canal, um, that was also looked at extensively once we received these comments. If the canal just ran parallel to our planning boundary up and down, that would be a fantastic suggestion and I think we would gladly grab onto that. Uh, natural boundaries tend to make great boundaries between zone, zoning designations and land use designations because it is a natural break. Unfortunately, a lot of the canals in this area, you know, they sort of crisscross or they, they go all the way to the planning area. And we started looking at how would this, what would this boundary look like? And we'd have areas where neighborhood two reached all the way out to Wagner if we followed the canal, which is what we were trying to avoid. We were trying to avoid neighborhood two going all the way out to Wagner. We really wanted to have that transition and that buffer of neighborhood one. Um, and I think, you know, that's why it ended up the way it, it did. We were just trying to be more uniform and not have these, really maintaining that buffer that we had heard so much about. Um, and then allowing municipal donations for conservation area development in the neighborhood one. I think that's a fine idea. That's definitely something council should consider when we look at code amendments to create the conservation area development. I don't think anything in the language that we have in the comp plan today would necessarily prohibit that. I think it would definitely be up to council if they wanted to include that language when we bring that back in March.
Correct. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Graves. We appreciate your testimony. Um, also signed up virtually is Carrie Smith. Carrie, are you there? She show on there. Carrie, you may be muted. We don't hear you.
Hey.
Oh, there we go. Now we can hear you.
No, I was muted.
Okay. So if you could just stay.
Is there any?
Oh, go ahead.
Um, one second. I'm sorry, guys. So technology is not great right now. One second. Okay. So my name is Carrie Smith. And I am representing a nonprofit organization called Growing Together. Our mission is to improve citizens' knowledge of local land use planning and to support good economic land use decisions. Um, we have done a full review of the comprehensive plan. I would, um, say that we do recommend or represent a lot of agricultural industry. Um, I'm going to jump into just a few quick items that I wanted to identify. In A3 in the appendix, you guys, um, addressed some agriculture implementation strategies. I think it's important to identify that certain, um, there's basically agriculture that is more of like the land and farming aspect, but there's also agriculture which the city of Caldwell has really built, um, a lot of industry on, which would be our businesses like Kirkham Company Summit Seed. It would be Dairy Gold, Fresca's. We have a lot of industry in um, the city of Caldwell that relies on our raw commodities from our agricultural areas. So, um, I would recommend a couple of implementation strategies be added. Um, one, an implementation strategy that would emphasize infill development. Um, ordinances should be developed that encourage infill and discourage growth on the outer boundaries of the impact area. Um, I would also think that, uh, identifying local businesses that rely on locally sourced goods and implement a strategy to protect those commodities would also be a way to, um, really support agriculture. And then, um, page C3 has a statement about And then page C3 has a statement about the area of city impact. It acknowledges that the city spans 22 miles and is irregular in shape, and that is because of annexations over time. The city of Caldwell should implement ordinances that stop this activity. You can easily adopt higher standards that prohibit annexations that only touch at a point. For example, the land that was annexed across from Farmway and Home Del. This would help encourage infill development and reduce urban sprawl that puts it in participacy. Bureaucratic areas for police, fire, and roads to maintain. Keeping them in smaller areas closer to the city would be much more cost-effective for the taxpayer. Jumping on to my last topic is the new laws in the Idaho statutes regarding the Local Land Use Planning Act. This is statute 676526-4B. This section specifically states that part of the criteria for adopting an area of impact is that the land needs to be likely, likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years. It also specifically states that it shall not extend more than two miles from the existing city limits. We have significant concerns that the, or the affected area boundary moving to Purple Sage Road. I understand, and I've visited with people about why that is, and because we have the Purple Sage Golf course out there, but I did some measurements. It appears that the city boundary is approximately in the new urban renewal area. I think it extends to the old Bean Farm. The northern boundary of this area definitely doesn't exceed the two-mile maximum that's allowed. So I would encourage compliance with that statute, and mostly I would encourage that because our group also did help organize a group in opposition against development in that area. There is significant farmland from some of our major farmers. And lastly, there's an algal made of sugar beet seeds that has just been developed. And I will wrap up. I'm all done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's difficult, were you not able to see the time? We probably heard the beep, but no, we do appreciate those comments. Any question from council? Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to those that are here. So Scott Tillman, if you could come forward, and if you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
Scott Tillman, 4520 Equinox Avenue, Caldwell. Yes, I was the one who mentioned the 400% increase. That was based off of the base number for R1, not the PUD. The PUD allows for up to six. The base number for R1 is three units per acre. I took it from base unit to if we implement the bonus plan. That will kill our capital improvement plan. I agree, we do need to expand our tax base, but it can't be all residential. We do need more commercial for the backend. Developers like residential because they can move it, they turn a profit faster. Hey, they're a business, they can do that. But we do need the commercial. My concern is Neighborhood Two. Takes up 90% of what exists as R1. With these kinds of densities, our capital improvement plan is destroyed. We don't have the existing land to even purchase to expand our infrastructure. We would have to be taking out, right now, just widening what we want to widen. We'll be putting sidewalks within five feet of people's front doors down 10th. When you drive down 10th, we want to widen it to three lanes. Follow the existing sidewalks. That's a lot of land we got to widen. We start implementing these kinds of densities, we're going to need to take it to five lanes. That's taking out homes. We don't have the ability for it. All I'm asking is, look at Neighborhood Two. Those densities, if it was a maximum of six, okay, I can understand that without the bonuses. The bonuses are, unless they're actually giving us land for schools, whether they're giving us land for fire departments, substations for our police, these are the things that we need. Open space is great, but cramming in the houses doesn't help us long-term. That's my concern. I voiced it before. I hope you take that into consideration when we look at codes, because we know the codes are coming behind it. This plan may be an overhaul, but they are bringing the codes. Please take that into consideration. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Next send up, Rob Graham. Again, just state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Rob Graham, 5304 Farmway Road in Caldwell. I'm here to address concerns with the compatibility between the city of Caldwell's comprehensive plan and the county's plan. Where we live, where in county, where it's owned ag, and you have Neighborhood Two right over the top of us. It's incompatible, and that's shown in your comprehensive plan, where Neighborhood One would be more compatible in that area. So my recommendation would be to push anywhere on Farmway at least back a quarter of a mile to be able to get that buffer zone that's needed from ag areas. What else have I got here? So that's all the way along the Farmway corridor. So where it goes out to Wagner, it would need to come back east of Farmway to have an appropriate buffer. I'm sure this medium-density Neighborhood Two doesn't want to hear me dispatching animals, varmint while managing my property, and that's just going to increase the burden on our already-stretched police force here. I appreciate Counselor Static's comments on the, what happened around Cedar Crossing. There was renderings that were submitted from those developers, and they didn't hold their word. They built two-story duplexes, and I don't think there's been the accountability held to these developers. And as the city council progresses forward, I would like to see some clear accountability and things in actual writing that can be held accountable, rather than having a gentleman's agreement, you know? That might have worked in the past. It works with me most of the time, a handshake, but there's people that like to push the limits, and I think the council needs to be able to hold people accountable to those. I think that's all I have, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rob. Good to see you. So if you could state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Shelley King, and I live at 4513 Pine Mountain Avenue in Caldwell, the Cumberland Estates. And I'd just like to thank council members and the mayor tonight for being here and all the hard work that was really put into this plan. I mean, we've read it, I've read it a couple of times, trying to grasp everything and just some of the things that I can see that are concerning for me. When I hear about amendments that come up, that we're going to be doing that in the future, I'd like to see those put into the plan now, before it's approved, before it moves forward. I just see that you're going to have this room filled with many more people as amendments come up and amendment and amendment. That's what I'm, that's how I'm feeling right now, so. But over the past year, I've appeared before to the council a couple of times advocating against the high-rise and high-density housing around our neighborhood. We've championed and maintained our small-town feel, that's what we want. I don't see anything in here that gives us buffer zones between our, where we're living now and what is happening with the high-density. You know, I see that it's going to probably negate all of the past year that we've been in here in front of this council, but, and that may not be the plan, but it sure feels like it now. Also, I think that, just to take the time, what if it's a couple more months to delve in and get some of those details put in the plan prior to approving it or having it move forward? I know you've done a lot of city meetings, and I wished I would have been ahead of this and probably a part of that, but I was not, so. But here are some of the things. I'm not even for bonus density. Why not just take it out of the plan? It's, why do we need it? Is it something that is required, a bonus density? If a developer comes in with something, I think just remove it. It seems to be, that seems like all the questions that we have tonight is around the bonus density and how much that is going to take. And require some setbacks from existing homes and existing neighborhoods or some sort of buffer zones, as you've presented before. I have concerns about the congestion, the existing roadways, the traffic, the noise with multiple-family housing and low-income housing. And then also, you know, the impact, current police and fire, those things have been mentioned. But I just want to urge the council to reconsider and refine this existing plan. Take the time now to do it. I think otherwise, we're going to be in front of planning and zoning with different issues that come up in the future, and when we can take care of it upfront now. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time. Nancy Roberts.
I would like to not speak at this time. Later, would that be all right?
Okay. And same for Robert as well?
Yes, Robert had to leave.
So Ben and Connie Keys, it indicated you had written, sent something in in writing, is that correct?
We had sent that in email to the.
Okay. Perfect. And same for Dennis Oakland as well? Correct? Okay.
I just have one.
So yeah, if you want, please come to the microphone, and then if you just state your name and address, that way we get you on the record, and those at home can hear you as well. So just state your name and address.
My name is Dennis Oakland. I live at 16925 Jerika Court. I'm one of those that was kind of alluded to, you know, complaining about one particular development. But it goes along with what's being said here, the buffer problem, or lack of a buffer and that type of thing. Also, we're in the county. You guys have been working on this for a year or better, correct? We don't, I received no notification for input, didn't know I was allowed to give any kind of input into your planning and stuff, but your planning now is directly affecting me and my entire neighborhood. I'm just kind of wondering how that works.
Very good. So for legal notifications, I don't know if we want to turn that over to the attorney or for staff. On something of this nature, it's very expensive for the city to send letters to every resident, and so typically it's through the newspaper, through media. I believe there's different sources. Do you mind touching, Robin, on other sources that were used to notify the public?
Sure. Mayor and council, we did do, during the poll process, we did do a lot of public notifications through social media. We did advertise in the newspaper. We did a lot on Facebook, on the city website. As the mayor mentioned, we, it's impossible to send notifications to every single resident in the city and the county. We also did some radio advertisements as well.
Okay. Well, I kind of understand that, and if I saw a notification, well, the city council's doing this or that, fine, I'm not in the city, you know? But now the city is on top of me, so. We got no notification, I guess, is just my biggest complaint on that. We had no idea this was so close to being a done deal, but that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming this evening. Laura Shannon?
Mayor and council, briefly. Sorry. That's not her voice that you heard. Laura Shannon, some people know her as Aunt Laura, and one of those people that knows her is Aunt Laura is me. So she's my aunt, and I've got some other family here as well. I've reviewed the applicable code, and I don't have any concern about a conflict, but just wanted it on the record that there is a really familiar relationship there, and I'm not part of the deliberative team, and I have no concern that if I get a question that there'll be any impact on my answer, so.
Very good. So we can talk with her afterwards to get all the dirt on you that we need, sounds like, so. Excellent. And thank you so much for clarifying that, stating that. We appreciate that, Doug. Okay. If you please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Laura Shannon. I live at 4707 Middlesbrough Way. Good evening, mayor and city council members. I submitted a lengthy letter detailing issues with this draft of the proposed comprehensive plan, which seems to pull out all stops on developer-dictated growth. I urge you to table it until those issues are addressed. The current 2020 comprehensive plan better serves the interests of Caldwell's taxpayers and preserves the council's own right and responsibility to exercise discernment regarding projects proposed by planners and developers. While looking up zoning information in January of '24, I happened on the proposed plan, but it was several months later before I truly understood the ramifications of it, as the city council advocated for Cumberland Estates when a developer proposed dense two-to-three-story apartments in our neighborhood. We greatly appreciated your role in that process. The developer's project was denied, but during his remarks, I heard him say, "We will return with more height and more density when the new comprehensive plan goes into effect." That's when I began talking with my community about the comprehensive plan. Fifteen months into the project, none of them had heard anything about it. Let's see. "It begs the question, why did the developers know the fine details of the proposed plan and speak as though it's a done deal, yet Caldwell's citizens were and mostly still are totally unaware that policies in our guiding document are being rewritten?" Sorry, I've got nerves going on here. "This prompted my research into those community engagement statistics, which indicate very minimal participation by Caldwell's citizens. To my knowledge, there has been no community discussion regarding the philosophy of smart growth," which is written into this document, "and the fabricated statistics on page 11 of this document and emphasized at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing call into question the transparency and integrity of this process. All the folks in this room should have had the opportunity to participate when the plan was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it hadn't been properly publicized. I'm a fourth-generation Caldwellite, and many of my neighbors are first-generation Caldwellites. We know growth is inevitable, but we who live here want a say in our future. Have you seen the structure that went up near the corner of Linden and Kimball? It towers over the homes in the neighborhood and looks out of place. I understand the plan will put two- and three-story housing throughout the town that looks like that." Or two- and three-story housing, anyway. "Under this plan, I fear Caldwell will become a developer-owned, government-subsidized tenant town that will only deteriorate with time. I fear this plan will drive those who have invested in Caldwell through homeownership into other communities where reasonable zoning regulations protect a homeowner's interest. I know you folks have a difficult job and many entities to satisfy, but please give Caldwell's citizens a comprehensive plan we can support. I also want to caution you against accepting this. Morgan mentioned it's a visioning document and not codified, but I believe the current status of our comprehensive plan right now is also not codified, and yet it dictates a lot of what you guys have to approve and what we have to put up with. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Very well done. George Kirkham. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, George Kirkham, 301 Warehouse. Can you pull up page 51, the map, please?
So, yeah, that would be our, over here with our IT, that would be... Page 51 of the comprehensive plan, is that correct?
Actually, it's 56. Future land use map with the various zoning.
So it would be page 101 of the docket.
Mr. Mayor, want to make sure that doesn't come off his time?
Oh, yeah, it won't. So we'll restart George for sure, so. So just give it one second, get this loaded. So then page 101, yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. So, in the interested time, Mr. Mayor, council, I'm going to agree with a lot of what Carrie Smith had to say, which you've already heard that testimony. I also agree with Mr. Graham here on those two things is moving that boundary all the way over to Wagner, that's a lot of good farmland, and I need that for my industry. Also, the jump to the far north seems like an overreach. You can do this in the future, you don't have to do it now. Next, I'd like to look at what used to be where my facilities are located at, near Simplot and Painter, over to Crookham Street and over to Kit. You know, my family's been there for four generations. It's always been light industry, currently a zone. Changing that to a mixed use really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. At Harvest, we work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and I don't see how we're going to get along with a bunch of mixed. So, I'd like to see that remain as light industry. And I'll stand for any questions if you have any. That's all I had.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, doesn't look good. Thank you so much, and thank you for everything you do in the community, George. It's very much appreciated. That moves us to Jim Moore, I believe is the last name?
Jim Moore, properties 521 Blomquist Avenue, just over from George Crookham's. We have the trucking industry there. Simplot Trucking is there. I agree with him as to moving that, staying light industrial, because we get more traffic. We've got houses right behind us now on the, off of Shaver. We get kids and jogging coming into the trucking. It's a traffic hazard already. You push that in with other people mixing in with 24-hour industries, and you're just going to have more problems. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, do you have a question for?
No, Mr. Mayor, just clarification. I think that was addressed at the very beginning of Morgan's comments, and that amendment was already made, or did I misunderstand?
If you could bring up slide two of my presentation? I think it would be helpful if the public speakers commented whether their property was inside this proposed revised boundary or not, because I'm not quite sure if they fell just within or just without.
I believe those are within, correct?
Mine falls without, and I believe Mr. Moore's falls without.
Without?
Yeah, we are to the east of Kit Lane.
Okay, so those would be just to the east of, with that shown on that map?
Bringing it up to Shaver and Painter is the one we'd be.
So, okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Greg Hardy? And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Greg Hardy, 4403 Middlesbrough. Just a couple of comments. Thank you for taking your time. I was born and raised in McCall, and after graduating high school, I spent 40 years in the tri-cities, Washington. Population was 120,000 in 1978, and it was 300,000 in 2017 when I retired. I have 36 years of engineering experience at the city of Kennewick. I helped design, layout, inspect, and manage commercial and residential developments and city infrastructure projects. Our planning and zoning work to make sure that the residents of Kennewick were benefiting from the improvements that were built. Sure, there was some backlash from developers and builders, but for the residents, they didn't have to foot the whole bill for the new infrastructure. We have family and businesses throughout Caldwell. Growth is going to happen, it can't be avoided. I want to see well-planned, committed, respectable, and quality improvements. My question is, what is the city of Caldwell getting when these new improvements are made? These architects, developers, and contractors come in and want to build. That's fine. They need to be accountable, and are they helping to pay for our aging and failing infrastructure? Has the building and permit fees increased? Are federal and state grants being applied for to help pay for these infrastructure projects? There is money out there, we just need to apply for it. As stated, we need fire, police, EMT, and schools, and we're not, and don't get me started on the roads. We sure aren't getting that with the failing levees every time. Please make a well-thought-out decision on this and future developments, and not change zoning each time to suit the desires of the developers. You wouldn't want the vacant lot behind your single-story home zoned for a three to five-story building. In conclusion, my son is currently active duty, Senior Master Sergeant in the Air Force. In a couple of years, he will retire as a Chief Master Sergeant and plans to move my daughter-in-law and my two adorable granddaughters here. I wear this hat of the United States Air Force to represent my son, his family, the military, and my country. I would like you to please wear your hat to represent me, my family, the city of Caldwell taxpayers, and the future families that move to this city. Let's get something for our buck and consider the Caldwell citizens on all submitted developments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate those remarks. Dan Wheatz? And if you could please state your name and address for the record as well, and you have three, you'll have three minutes.
Dan Wheatz, 18714 Fargo Road in Wyler. I am here to represent Idaho Farmway, hence Farmway Road. We've owned the ground there along Farmway between Logan and Linden for about 95 years. I'm the fourth generation that's been here. I'm going to take a little different approach. Farmway Road is a, is an arterial, and it's going to be an arterial. You guys have made plans to, to consider that arterial, and the density is going to go up. The traffic is not going to go down Eustick, because Farmway Road is the only north-south arterial between I-84 and Highway 95. So, it's going to go to five lanes, it's going to get busier. You know, there, years ago, I could, we could play a football game on Farmway Road and never have to stop. Things have changed, and change is inevitable. We don't like it any better than anybody else. I think the density is going to have to go up along Farmway Road, and especially between Logan and Linden on Farmway. I'd like to take and make, you know, that's Neighborhood Two, east of Bard'sley Drain. I'd like to have that zone mixed use. Let's put some commercial in there. Let's make something that is, we can be proud of, and the density is less, but maybe there's no commercial between Farmway Road and 10th other than at Kimball. There's, there's a little bit of commercial around the hospital. There's no place for these guys to go, to go shop, or to go to a store or anything. So, I, I firmly believe that the density along these arterials is going to have to go up to be able to pay the bills. The density can go down in the rural areas for Neighborhood One, however you want to apply that. For us, Bard'sley Drain would be a, be a good Indian Creek substitute. We could modify that. We could have some housing on the west side of it. Commercial may be on the east side. But take this pressure off of where George Crookham and, and these fellows are down there where it's industrial. Let's put some, some commercial in, some neighborhood commercial, let it grow organically along, when the houses grow, the commercial grows. So, I would ask you for Idaho Farmway to, to consider maybe some mixed use in some areas that are next to or are adjacent to the arterials. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Eric Shannon? And if you could state your name and address for the record as well?
Already, thank you. My name is Eric Shannon, and I live at 4707 Middlesbrough Way in Caldwell. And, Mr. Mayor and City Council, just a few things I want to touch on. The first one is the citizen input. The introduction of the plan basically says that it's the community's vision for itself, direct expression of the desires of the community, and it was developed with extensive citizen input. And I would think that a citizen would basically be a resident of Caldwell, somebody that lives here in Caldwell. And I know that the, in the public meetings and the website visits and the online comments, there were, there was a lot of representation of city employees, hired consultants, outside stakeholders, outside developers, and outside property owners. And that's all good. Those voices all need to be heard and need to be, be in the record. But when you peel all that back, I think that, that the actual number of Caldwell citizens, just the common man off the street that, that lives there, was incredibly low. And, and if you're going to go to the effort, if we're going to go to the effort to say that it was developed with extensive citizen input, then we need to, to make a, a better push at trying to, to bring those folks in. And if that's not important, if we decide that's not important, then we shouldn't have the language state that. We should have the language say that this is who did it, and we got some, some input from the citizens. But anyway, that's one thing I think we should work on to, to do better. And then I know that the plan is, is a plan, but still, I think it needs to have better definitions, because it does drive city quote, code. We need to have, yeah, more clear rules and expectations. I have a lot of concerns with the, with what the wording was and for the place types. Really, the big driver on that was what, what council member Static said. When, when I go in there and I'm looking at it, I'm looking at what are the buffer zones? What are the transitions from, from the high level, high density down to the low level? I would like to see that more specifically said and, and get that explicit in codes that you don't have what happened where, where it's got to be dealt with every time in a development agreement. Other issues I'm concerned about, but have been discussed before by previous speakers, are the neighborhood, neighborhood two areas and the density bonuses. And, but I, I guess I would say that the plan needs to be specific, otherwise, why, what, what's the use of the plan? So, that's basically it, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time. Val Palmer? And this name, I apologize. B U T H is the last name, I believe? I, I think it's I U S T F or J U S T F? Oh, yes, please come forward. I think I've seen your name before, and I can never remember it. So, if you could again remind us of your name, and then if you could give us your address as well, then you'll have three minutes.
All right. My name is Yosse Bora, and I live on 15303 Roca Avenue, Caldwell. This is the first time I've heard about this. Already, any outreach, I don't know any people, anybody in our neighborhood that get the newspaper or anything. I got probably a couple of people, but anyway, I put a couple of thoughts, wishes and observation in my flight over back to Boise. But anyway, many cities in different states take advantage of the surrounding topography, agriculture, orchards, and viticultures, et cetera, to create neighborhoods, architecture to complement their surrounding. Cities like Leavenworth, Washington, Helen, Georgia, Solvang, California, Napa, et cetera. At what, at, at one time, this was followed here in Caldwell. Take, for instance, a good example of College of Idaho. Designers foresight in mind to design and build a school, a timeless piece that withstands the test, test, test of time aesthetically and architecturally. Surrounding that, that college, there were houses, bungalows, cottages, and Victorians, et cetera. Caldwell, they are timeless, and some even in the entire state look better, more eye pleasing than the glorified tough sheds allowed to be built within the last two, three decades. Home, they are visually devoid of any character, cheaply built, and there to say hurt one's psyche. Up the standard, raise the bar of architecturally designed homes, apartments, and request more. The era of, it's good enough for Caldwell County and county should end. Put, put standards in place that if a developer doesn't finish a development and sells remaining, the new developer must be building a list, the current architecturally styled and standard home, perfect example is Mandalay in Caldwell. The developer came in, built beautiful homes, and then Lennar came in, and, you know, you know, the, the rest. It seems like many large developments are dumping their old type, solely designed in Caldwell Treasure Valley in the name of affordable housing. If the local large builder does not have the pride, high standards to build architecturally desirable homes here in Caldwell, beautifying Caldwell for decades, decades to come, why are we surprised they're out of state? Fortune 500 builders will not care as well for our area while building desirable neighborhoods in other state. Apartments going up everywhere supposedly to fill the void, yet many that were finished years ago still have a super large lease for lease signs in front of them and not filled. Is our motto, if we build it, they will come? Addressing what Mr. Static says, why can apartment, my thing is like, if you build a two-story apartment next to a single home, why not build garages next to the single thing home, so there would be a buffer next to it? What is the definition of affordable housing? People from Eagle, Kuna would consider at least three-fourths of housing here in Caldwell affordable.
Then if you could just go ahead, if you have one last comment?
That's it.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stan Seaworth? And Stan, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes as well.
Stan Seaworth, 4003 Preston Avenue, Caldwell. Mayor and council, I walked here tonight. It was a lovely walk, about a little under three miles. It was cold. It's a bit of an adventure. It's sidewalk, it's kind of gravel, it's roadway, it's dirt lot, it's, it's an interesting walk, to say the least. And I did, because I, you see me here frequently for the airport, and I'm on the city website, I, I saw that this process was going on. I saw that on the website, and so I jumped on it and made some comments. Back in December, I read through pretty much the entire thing and added some comments. I'm not really sure what happened to those comments. But a lot of my comments had to do with being able to walk around and get exercise through the city. I didn't bring a car to park, too, and you probably will like that. I will carpool home. But in, in, in chatting with a few of you and Rob McDonald about impact fees, one thing I'm realizing is that, like, on impact fees, we get, we get things like sewer and roads and water taken care of, but like this subdivision we just approved out by Farmway and Eustick on the southwest corner, I will bet you, it will be a pedestrian island. Like, it'll have water, it'll have roads, but to walk from there to anywhere else will be a challenge and not particularly safe for children. So, I don't know if, if extending sidewalks can be part of the impact fees, but it's, it's sure something that if we want to reduce cars downtown, if we want to make it safer for our children and get more exercise, I think we will try to figure out a way to do more with sidewalks. The, the, the second comment that I had, I wanted to concur with the first speaker, the remote speaker, Mr. Graves, on that west boundary. It, it, it doesn't look very organic at all. It's just like a straight boundary. It's the only side of the town that looks like that. I would like to see some more thought go into that. Number, number three on the ADU, I think we're looking at kind of a rec on that. It's just not, not very practical in terms of services. My biggest concern and my last concern, I see my time is up, and that is pretty much what both the Shannons said about process, and that I, I, I know there was a big effort, but unfortunately, I don't think the communication was very good with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Linda Davis? And if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Linda Davis. I live at 4413 Pinnacle Place in Caldwell here, and we're in the Cumberland Estates. Realizing that growth has to happen, of course, I would like to see a little bit more put into a 55-plus community if we want to go there, because it seems like a lot of our older people that are aging out, we have 70-plus aged. We have seventy-plus age group in our community right now. Would like to see something like the patio homes and things like that that would give them a little bit more of a community feel, but it would also give them something to look forward to in their area and possibly some different, uh, facilities to help to accumulate into that area so that that way we have more things to do. And I think that a lot of this is too much urban blight and urban sprawl than it is to be able to walk from one area to another or to be able to go and see different things. And I'd like to see a little bit more done in the community so that we have a little bit more outpouring and people would join and go into different things. And that's about it.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down and, and speaking with us. Okay, um, so that puts us back to Nancy. Ready or not. Okay, so if you state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Nancy Roberts. I live at eight, two, three Albany Street in Caldwell. And I'm one of the owners of R and M Steel Company in Caldwell. And prior to this meeting starting tonight, R and M Steel Company's property was involved in this process. And then, uh, during the meeting, I find that we are not. And your first presenter, I believe I heard her say that the paperwork you had in front of you was no longer correct, that she had given you a new paperwork because there were changes as to the boundaries of what is being considered tonight. So I would propose that the city council is probably not prepared sufficiently to vote tonight. Uh, it's a huge, huge, huge thing you're talking about here. And I want to say that I agree with all of George Crookham's comments and Jim Moore's comments. And, uh, Farmway, yes, is an arterial. It's vital to the community and to the state of Idaho for trucking and transport, other transportation. So it's going to be very important to make sure that the trucks can get up and down there. To have that closed off for a year is a disaster. I really didn't have too much else to say. I just would like to have you consider very, very carefully before you put all these things through. It's certainly more than I can understand the future ramifications of. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here, Nancy. Um, as mentioned, that was everybody that signed up, um, wishing to testify this evening, so.
Mayor. Bonnie Layton was here and she was going to testify, but she had to leave.
Okay.
She did send the city clerk and us an email. I don't know if that's okay for me to read that into the record.
Uh, yeah, how long is it?
It's not very long.
Okay.
It's short.
So I do see her on there. She indicated no to testify. That's why I did not call on her.
Oh, okay.
So just to clarify.
Yeah, she just sent us an email.
Yep. So yeah, if you want to go ahead and read that.
Of course. So, uh, this is Bonnie Layton, representing NV five, six ninety South Industry Way in Meridian, Idaho. Uh, she is a planner, um, an outside consultant planning company. And she said, I apologize, I was not able to stay to testify. I think city staff and the consultant team has done a wonderful job on this comprehensive plan update. It is by far one of the best plans I have seen in my career. I believe it is very clear and informative and the graphics used to illustrate various concepts are really good tools for the public to understand what the vision for the city or various components of the plan. I also want to commend, commend the team and for the numerous opportunities for the public to provide feedback and the community outreach efforts. I am in full support of the plan and believe that it continues to move Caldwell forward in a positive direction. Thank you for your time, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, that is all that had signed up to testify this evening on regard to this item. So with that, I would stand for, uh, motion for the council to close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question first.
Oh, yes.
I just want to make sure that gray area that first came up was from public comment that we worked on today. Mostly for that area where Mr. Crookham works at. So we missed, uh, we must have missed what boundary was requested through the folks you had calling Mr. Crookham. So could you come and make sure you show us where, uh, this boundary would better benefit the area in which? Did he leave or is he here?
No, he's here.
Okay, couldn't see him there. Can you come make sure that we have that boundary identified that?
I know it affects, uh, Mr. Moore as well, too.
Right, so we try, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, sorry.
So we, we tried to listen to the public comments, obviously, and your comments from your staff. And so it wasn't, uh, done intentionally, but where would that boundary best serve that area would, would benefit?
Do you mind on the microphone so that people at home can hear you?
Okay, perfect. Um, if you were to take it over to Painter Road down to, is it Shaver, Jim? Yeah, and that is all industrial. You have all kinds of trucking companies there. We have a processing facility there. You've got, um, right now insulation. You've got, uh, Tony D Mark is there. I mean, they're all commercial light industrial. There really is no retail. There is no residential, other than what, uh, Mr. Moore represented near his business.
So would that essentially take it to Painter Avenue? Is that kind of, that's kind of what I'm envisioning? Is that more or less correct, that are you just extending that way?
Yeah.
There is a residential subdivision, um, not along all of Painter, but a portion. And so I think that we had looked at these comments and obviously the council can choose to move the boundary wherever they, they would like. Um, but I think that staff was looking at this and trying to leave some buffer around the existing Tian residential subdivision um, so that we didn't put, you know, as we've heard a lot of comments tonight about not wanting to put incompatible uses together, we were trying not to put industrial straight up next to residential and we were trying to leave a little bit of buffer with the mixed use to transition. Obviously, this would not actually rezone any of these parcels. Everyone here would continue to be, um, M one, light industrial as they're zoned today. It would just change the options that they would have to rezone to in the future. Um, and obviously it's up to the council's discretion.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I didn't know if I was allowed to speak. We have no interest in, or at least I have no interest in rezoning any of that residential has light industrial to what it is currently. Completely agree with that. And I may have my streets wrong, but.
Yeah, and I think, so I'm looking at the, our web map here and I see that subdivision that you're talking about. I see there's like a Holly Street, um, and then an Anderson Street.
Yes, correct.
On that. And then, so Shaver Avenue, but I don't know if that would include, if it went to Shaver, if it would include that property.
Anderson Street, right dead ends. That is bumping right up against the back of my property.
And what was your address again? Sorry.
Five twenty-one Longquist.
Five twenty-one Longquist.
The whole end of the block. I have three front streets.
Okay.
Favorite end of Longquist. So, and John Wolf, he has the property behind me. It's up against that property also.
Okay, so if it did go to Shaver Avenue, that would include the Blonquist Avenue on that. If it, instead of Painter, if it went to Shaver, which I don't know if we can pull that back up.
Jim, maybe you might be better at, you know those streets better than I do.
It's hard to get up there close.
For the, where Anderson, excuse me, where Anderson comes in up there in Dead Ends, there's that housing development there right along Simplot Trucking. So it comes across there. The street kind of makes a jog over and comes out towards, uh, that would be, let's see, the street that comes in for.
Laurel.
Laurel, yes. Okay, so, but those areas there, if we just jog out where that subdivision is, but that other is all industrial. And everybody in there is pretty much industrial. There's, you know, and a lot of plants work twenty-four, seven. Some close to it, um, you've got the, uh, dirt plant right across from me where they grind dust and residential and mixed use would just be complaining with that terribly. I mean, the dust and stuff even for us is terrible already. But, you know, with the trucking coming in there from Simplot Trucking moving twenty-four, seven in and out of that gate there, it would just be a mess with other traffic involved there with the trucks. Cause you've got our trucks, you know, for our shop repair, you've got their trucking, you've got the other companies around close by that all use tr- the transportation industry quite heavy. So.
Mr. Mayor, what is, a follow-up, please?
Yeah.
So what is right next to the residential there now on the current plan?
So it is, I don't know if we can pull up web map.
Simplot Trucking is right next to it.
The zoning is industrial.
Yeah, so it's industrial, then you've got like, I mean, it's, it's a hodgepodge.
It is.
It's majority is light industrial. So either you're going to have, if you went to Shaver, you're still going to have light industrial on the, that's on the east of Shaver that now wouldn't be. So it's either, do you include the, the residential and the industrial or do you include some of the industrial in the, not being in part of the plan?
Yeah, that, the residential kind of just pokes right into the middle of the industrial right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and that's what I'm trying to get settled for tonight, so I don't know which way a motion's going to go, but we definitely need this, this worked out. And I think that's the issue is if it's already zoned for light industrial, then the neighborhood must, should know that it is there, should know. Doesn't mean they do.
I imagine they know.
I'm just saying, we don't want to switch it from, you know, uh, neighborhood two or, or R two, two light industrial. But if it's already zoned industrial, it doesn't cause me as much concern as if it were not industrial already.
Regardless of what it's identified in, in the comp plan, when you adopt it tonight, none of that forces anyone in any of those properties to rezone. They're, they're permitted to stay at M one forever. As I mentioned earlier, the comp plan is really showing the potential zones that they could rezone to in the future if they chose to redevelop their property and rezone. And so if we put the employment center designation in the comprehensive plan this evening, then it's saying in the future, if they rezone, they could rezone to a higher industrial use adjacent to that residential neighborhood. Whereas if we put a mixed use buffer there between the employment center and the residential area, it would say, if you choose to rezone to something in the future, it wouldn't be a more intense industrial use. It would be more of a commercial use.
Just some more follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So on the change to employment center, um, is it my understanding that it has too many options for you to go into that?
Probably. I would wonder if that subdivision would be the mixed buffer area, your mixed use right there. That from Painter in that little subdivision, you know, that area there, you're mixed. Leave the industrial that's already industrial to maintain that.
So encourage the residential homes to redevelop into commercial businesses, I think.
No, use that as your mixed buffer. You, because some of that's already mixed, as you're saying, right there at that edge.
I think that what we've heard a lot of throughout this process as staff was that we wanted to make sure we had good transitions. So we were just trying to avoid doing a neighborhood use right next to an employment center use. But obviously that's up to the council's discretion. But that is the reason that there, there was that sort of space there, um, between the neighborhood along Schaefer and what staff had proposed, um, just explaining why it was that way.
The problem is you've already got industrial and residential already next to each other.
Right, and no one's, no one is being asked to rezone their property. It's just what would we want to see there if people were to change the use in the future? What would the desire be? Because Employment Center does allow like M two and, um, IP Industrial Park and M two. So higher industrial uses. So if we want to make that Employment Center, there's a potential that they could rezone in the future to higher industrial uses, um, if we put that as Employment Center. And so we were just trying to avoid that, um, but it's obviously up to the council's discretion. We've just heard so much feedback about transitions as we were trying to adhere to that.
Yeah, and so this actually should help because it, it is the, so the zoning, and we'll be able to see this here in a second, we'll drop it in. So majority is light industrial. The residential is zoned right now, traditional neighborhood. The covers, the plan map shows basically the residential as traditional neighborhood on the comprehensive plan with industrial around it. But there's, as you'll see, when we, when we get this pulled up, there's, it's not all congruent. You have a light industrial spotted throughout there. There you can see so, um, I know, I apologize, you behind won't be able to see, but on the screen, so like right near is where we're talking about.
Yes.
So you can see there's this traditional neighborhood zoning, then you got light industrial there, there, and at the corner here. So there's really no way to just completely get all the light industrial on this side and all the residential there.
You're in a tough area there, so.
So it's almost one of those points where your comprehensive plan, this is a document to guide for twenty, thirty years. So twenty, and I'm not saying, if any of those people are here today, I'm not saying that you have to move, but twenty, thirty years from now, is that more likely to be encompassed as industrial or continue as residential? I would think that probably the industrial. Again, that's thirty, forty, fifty years long. I'll be long gone by then. But what is that future, future use of that property really boiled down to?
And so, Mr. Mayor, would you, would you agree or disagree with moving the boundary over or leaving it as it is? Oh.
Um, I, I think it needs to move. Um, the question is how far, whether that is to, I have to get back so I can read it.
I have some input when you're done there, too.
So to either move it to Shaver Avenue or to Painter Avenue would be just my initial thought on it would be the, one of those. Um, I, and it's, I hate doing that on the fly. Um, so because, you know, one moment it sounds really good, but then somebody else brings up another thing. Like tonight, you know, we've heard lots of great discussion on lots of different things that people bring to light. And so it's, it sounds good now, but maybe there's another comment that comes up later down the road where it doesn't sound as good, but. Chris, or sorry, councilor, all good?
Yeah, along this, along this same line, I'm kind of going the other way. The residential in this particular area is by far the minority. It is pretty much all industry. Matter of fact, at the corner of Laurel and Painter is another fairly large seed company. Um, and during the season, they run twenty-four, seven, just like the Crookham company does. And, and so from, everything from Laurel to Simplot west of Painter, um, is probably ninety-eight percent some type of industrial or manufacturing. And so I, I would, I would lean towards keeping a designation that did not interfere with any of that industry in that area. Whatever that, whatever that designation is most appropriate, I would go from Simplot to Laurel and, and, and keep all of that, whatever that, uh, whatever zoning is appropriate for that.
Yeah, and just kind of, again, you know, looking through, this isn't everybody, but the majority that I'm seeing going through those homes appear to be rentals. Where the people don't, there are some, but the majority that I'm seeing is there's different mailing address from the home address. So whether that plays into that as well, but again, a difficult thing, I think, to do on the fly, um, on that. But something that, yeah, would need, I think, some good discussion on that and kind of move forward in that regards. So, and, uh, Council Register talked about the testimonies. We still have public testimony open. So are we satisfied with the answers that we've given to move forward with the motion for the closed public testimony portion? Okay, in a second.
Second.
Does motion from Council Dody and a second Counselor, um, Denver to close the public testimony portion of this hearing? Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Um, so that turns it over to discussion by the council. Obviously, staff is still available for any questions. Um, and then any discussion from, from council in regards to where you want to go. Counsel Register.
Um, I think this has been a really good conversation and appreciate everybody coming out and everybody who's participated. I am wondering though, if this is something that we should table until we have all of these suggestions or whatever, all, I mean, I think we're there. I just don't know if we're all the way there yet. So I'm wondering if we should consider that.
Counselors, start it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that. I think we should table it until we get these changes made and then come back and look at it again.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I didn't know if you wanted staff to address some of the comments that were made by the public. It might be of an important nature because some of the comments like about height and those types of things, those are never going to be in a comprehensive plan. Those come in your code. So I don't know if there's any importance to addressing some of the comments that were made or if we just want to continue the council discussion.
That would be good. And I think that if we do move forward with what was suggested, that I would recommend a continuation rather than tabling. Cause that gives us a date certain. That way everybody here knows exactly when it's going to be discussed again. So I know there was discussion. It is impossible. It would have cost us probably about twenty thousand dollars to notify everybody in the area of this meeting tonight. So it is very difficult. I know staff went above and beyond to try to make sure people were aware of it. So I would recommend if it does, I think we get that information and if council does want to continue, I would recommend, recommend continue rather than table to a date certain, even if it's two months out. Just so that the people here know what date it is, they can put it on their calendar when we're coming back. Just so that the people here know what date it is, they can put it on their calendar when we're coming back to discuss it. Doesn't mean we'll have all the answers, but hopefully we will, and then that'd be another time to discuss it.
I think that would be fine, I think part of, um, like, I think it was Mr. Tillmont that said, talked about, and I think this is true, the codes are gonna follow, right, um, so it might be easier to look at some of the things in this plan, knowing what those codes are gonna be that follow, or at least have an idea of them, or should they be worked in? Or how that works, and I, and also, interested, he's not paying attention to us right now, but I'm also interested in some of, some more conversation about what you said about how this affects, I think you said it was our capital, um, projects, or whatever that concern was. So, not, not necessarily right now, since we closed public hearing, but I think those are some big things, and then also taking in to consideration the other things that the community said, and I saw you were taking notes on everything, so maybe that's, that's something where you can, um, look and see if those are already answered, and how that is, and, and not, so I would suggest continuing it.
Yeah, could we hear from staff? Kind of update that before we move forward with a possible motion on that. So, yeah, Morgan or Robin, when do you wanna address some of the things that came up and kind of provide clarification?
Ms. Mayor, I will withdraw my second, so.
Um, okay, Mayor and Council, I'll try to go through the ones that I captured, and then Morgan can go through the ones that maybe I missed. So there was some questions, again, about the bonus density program, um, the criteria for that, and maybe that there's an option for donation of land and those types of things. Staff has looked at that, and in the proposed code amendments that will be coming before council for consideration, there is quite a few different ways that you can score points. It's, it will be a point system, and you may only score a half a point, and therefore you may only gain one dwelling unit per acre. But it's anything from actually providing deed-restricted housing, um, which serves anybody that, you know, is making less than eighty percent of the area median in income, and then deed restricting the rent or the purchase of the house to a certain number. Um, it could be that we require a certain type of housing units to be in there, that council prefers, that we're missing. Um, and they get maybe a few points for that. Um, the other thing we have looked at is dedication of land for school districts, dedication of land for police and fire, uh, dedication of lands for parks for the city, so there's all kinds of things we've been looking at, we've also been looking at maybe one of the criteria for, uh, getting bonus density is that you build a certain number of the houses so that they're age-in-place houses. Where you have wider hallways, you have, uh, lowered countertops, you have, um, backing in the bathrooms for grab bars. You have an entry that's wheelchair accessible, so that somebody that moves into that house could essentially stay there and not have to move out as they age, so there's various things. Um, as far as, there, there were some comments about wanting these code amendments, wanting to actually have those as part of this plan. Um, those are separate, and there's a reason for that, because a comp plan is never meant to be a code. It's never meant to be law and, and black and white, it's meant to be a flexible guide, it's not parcel-specific. Um, and like I said, it's a guide, so even if council says something had a land use designation, and there was something adjacent to it, council could say, well, I still think that even though the map shows this, what they're doing still meets the intent and the vision of that comp plan, so it's not a hard and fast, steady rule. Um, those amendments that come after the comp plan, that's where you wanna codify that stuff. And there was a lot of comments about buffer zones and setbacks and roadways and traffic and impacts to police and fire, and height, so things like setbacks and heights and buffer zones, that is all gonna be in the codes. And the reason those are in the codes is because they're enforceable, because it is codified. Um, there was a comment about our current comp plan, um, I don't remember if it was not being codified or is codified, our current comp plan is not codified. I'm not aware of any jurisdiction that ever codifies their comp plan, that's just not the way it's done anywhere that I know of in any state. Um, what you can do is you can reference certain things in your code, like if your comp plan has density, which ours does, a lot of comp plans don't, but you would still have to reference that in your code for it to mean anything. So like, where the comp plan may recommend, oh, we have a vision that you might have two or three stories, that's gonna come out of the code. Um, and when we write those codes, we're gonna take into consideration that if you're next to single family, we already have something in our code that says you're limited to twenty-five foot height. That's not gonna change. Um, and if, and if you'll notice in the comp plan, there's, there's some language in there that says, you know, they may recommend a certain height, but there's also like some, some clarifying language in there that says, however, you have to take into consideration the massing and scaling of the buildings that are next to you. So, what they're saying is that, okay, maybe in this designation, three stories is appropriate, but only if what's next to you is compatible, like it's two stories maybe, and so maybe three stories is okay. If it's one story, three stories may not be okay, and so you'd have to step that building down, or put greater setbacks, or not even have three stories. But those are things that come in the code, they don't ever come in the comp plan. Um, as far as impacts to police and fire, those are already taken into consideration through the city charges development impact fees. Um, and they, they charge those for, for police, fire, parks, and now for traffic. The reason for those impact fees is so that the growth that is happening, the growth pace for itself, and that the existing residents and the taxpayers are not paying for that growth. And so developers pay impact fees. They also pay, like, connections to sewer and water, um, if they have to do mainline extensions. Um, a lot of the developments, they, we require the traffic impact studies, and a lot of times they're required to put a lot of money into widening the roadways, putting in curb gutter sidewalk, um, putting in in- intersections or roundabouts. So, those things are already happening to help that growth. And I know that people, um, sometimes say that we don't want growth because we can't keep up with infrastructure. But the city does not have the money in their general fund to pay for all that infrastructure. So without that growth, those improvements to your roads and your streets and everything will not happen. Because the developers are the ones that are paying for that. Um, again, as far as notifications, we do the best we can, um, with the legislative matter. You know, we, we do post it on the city's website, we publish it in the newspaper that there's gonna be a public hearing. Um, we do the best we can, it's really challenging when it's a citywide thing, you don't, I mean, it's very, very costly, and that is something that would cost the taxpayers, and we don't wanna do that. So we do the best we can to advertise correctly to meet statutes. Um, again, this plan, if it was adopted tonight, it does not change the process, because it's not code. So like, even those bonus densities ain't gonna happen until a code comes in. Um, the different types of land use applications, I think there was a comment about this plan is gonna change the council's authority to make decisions, that's absolutely not correct. Any authority that the council has today with the current comp plan, they will have tomorrow, even if this is approved. The only way the council's authority will change is if when we bring code amendments forward, the council approves to change that authority, that's the only time that will change. And some of that authority cannot be changed, because statutorily, you have to go through a public process, so like special use permits or subdivision plaits, those have to come, you know, before a governing body. Um, plaits have to come before council, so there's just certain things that statutorily, you're never gonna be able to change anyways. Um, there was a comment about the comprehensive plan not being properly publicized. That's absolutely incorrect. Um, we met all of the legal statutory publications. I believe there was a slight confusion on the plan Caldwell dot com site, that the plan was not uploaded onto that site in time, but it was put on the city's website, and it was notified accordingly. So as far as legal statutory, we met all of the legal statutory. And when it was brought to our attention that it was not on the Plan Caldwell site, we made sure that it was on there immediately. Um, we talked a little bit about height, that's, comp plan doesn't regulate height, that's gonna come in the codes. Um, again, there was a question about what do you get when developers build? Well, we get infrastructure improvements, we get development impact fees, we get new roads and intersections and utilities, and we get permit fees. Um, so actually, we get a lot in return, especially, um, when we start writing into the codes that they have to provide certain public amenities in addition to all these other things. Um, there was a comment about in residential zones, uh, commercial will be, or, they'd need more commercial in the residential zones. Um, this comprehensive plan, if you look in the residential zones, it's, talks about commercial being a supporting use. With the proposed codes that will be coming forward, we will be proposing that there is neighborhood commercial uses permitted at major intersections and fronting any arterial streets, because we recognize that in our residential zones, we don't have enough commercial, and people are having to drive long distances to get there. And the goal would be to, is to provide those services that are close by to reduce the commute time. Also keep, you know, that, that economic factor in our community where people are spending their money here and not going outside of the city, so we don't have that retail leakage. Um, but also, so that people can bike and walk, and they don't have to drive a vehicle necessarily, they can get to services close by their neighborhoods. Um, I'm gonna let Morgan touch on the westbound, not looking organic, um, on the comp plan. Um, accessory dwelling units, there was a comment about the comp plan doesn't provide requirements for that. Again, that's because the comprehensive plan is not a code. The accessory dwelling units will come out of the land use section of the code, and there will be a specific section in the code that addresses nothing but accessory buildings, accessory dwelling units, and accessory uses. Um, and again, all of those future codes, they will have to come before P and Z, it will be a public hearing for the public. They will then have to come before city council, they will be a public hearing for the public. So none of the codes that we've talked about today will ever get implemented without public comment, public hearing, and council's approval. Um, Morgan, you wanna touch on whatever I missed, I'm sorry, I was trying to write fast.
Same, you had some good ones that I didn't necessarily have. Um, I will try to be brief, but I do wanna address some of the public's comments and concerns. There was a recommendation that the city focus on infill. I believe that staff and the council agree, we've heard that from the council before, that you guys would like to see an infill development code to encourage more infill development. Um, and staff is working on that, and we do hope to bring that to you in the future. There was a statement that we need more commercial, I feel like this plan does provide the opportunity for commercial in more places. I heard feedback during the process that this would help encourage, and the public was excited by the opportunity to have commercial services in so many areas to service the public, so I think that this plan addresses that, those, those comments and concerns. There was a question about compatibility with the county plan and a request to move Neighborhood One further east across Farmway. This goes hands in hand with a comment we had later about wanting more intensity on Farmway and moving Neighborhood One to the, further west. I think the fact that we heard, I think, two comments for and two comments against tonight, where that boundary should be on Farmway indicates that we probably found a pretty decent compromise. We've had requests for more in, density and less density, so we really did look at all those comments when creating the plan, and I feel like we were able to balance, um, the and the county weighed in, absolutely, and the county saw our proposal to shrink the planning area from Wagner back, I'm sorry, from Chicken Dinner back to Wagner, and they were very supportive. And they did not express any concerns, that they were hopeful that we would shrink this back any further. If we stopped it right at Farmway, it would be a very, very abrupt transition. As was mentioned earlier this night, that is an arterial road, it will develop, and if that was a firm boundary, we would have rather intense development on the east side with ag on the left side, and it would not be very organic. As someone mentioned this evening, the boundary wasn't very organic, and I think that that would further perpetuate the problem. Uh, there was a question about what benefits the density bonus program would have to the city. I think we skimmed over that, but the benefits would be that the council could create very, very, very specific criteria and set what benefits they wanted, if the city wants to see more fifty-five and older communities, or age-in-place communities, we can require that. If we wanna see more attainable housing, we can require that. If we wanna see more conservation areas, we can require that. So I think what benefits the density bonus program provides the city is really up to the council, because you will be able to set very specific criteria. There was a comment about wanting more setbacks and buffering between multifamily and single-family. We've heard that before, staff has drafted a multifamily development standard code, we've workshopped it with council twice. And so that will be coming forward in the near future, and that has very specific guidance on how those transitions would look between multifamily and single-family. There was a statement about the addition of the planning area moving north, going too far. It was a very intentional reach north, simply to reach the golf course, the city has a golf course that is outside the current city limits and outside the current planning area, as well as, I believe, a well. And so, the extension of the planning area north was very narrow, and it was just to um, pull into our planning area, so people are aware of these city assets that we already have. I've talked about Farmway and requests for both increase and decrease density. Related to public comment, I just wanna say that we tried very, very, very hard to bring as much public comment into this plan as possible, but we can't force people to participate. We went, we tried to go to the public, we went to public areas where people gather, near the ice skating rink, on the plaza, at different restaurants, we tried to show up where the public was, so that those people who hadn't heard about it might hear about it, you know, because we will be there. We handed out flyers, business to business, we had postcards available, uh, at the front desk of City Hall, so anyone who came in to pay a bill could grab one and see it. I did radio and TV interviews encouraging people to come participate. We did websites, on the city's website, we did Facebook, we did newspaper, we did press release. I just wanna say that even if we didn't have tons of public comment, we tried very, very hard to get public comment, and people have the opportunity to come or not come, at their discretion. We did have thirty-some-one thousand clicks on the website, um, which is great. That does not mean that we had thirty-six thousand individual people on the website, um, but it was highly trafficked. Um, there was a comment, a request for more patio homes and fifty-five plus. And I wanna say that this plan's focus on being able to provide a variety of housing types and increasing density, so you could have those smaller, single-family lots really does accommodate the desire for patio homes and fifty-five plus communities. Not that it's limited to that, but it would be one of the varieties of housing types that this plan would be encouraging. Um, there was another comment, I believe, um, about the boundary change. Oh, I think that she left. From before the meeting started till after the meeting started. There was no suggestion by staff that the planning area was changing, and a parcel that may not have been in the planning area was now in, or a parcel that was in the planning area was now out, I wanted to clarify that. There was that proposed amendment at the very beginning, that we changed some areas to employment center from mixed use. But we were not proposing that anything new be included or excluded from the planning boundary. And, oh, two things. First, there is a reason that we are being intentional, and we would like an approval on the comprehensive plan before we bring code amendments back to the city council, and that's because what you approve in this comp plan is what guides us in creating those code amendments. So we don't know which code amendments to bring you, or what they should look like, until we have an approved comprehensive plan. And so that is why it is two-step, we need the guidance. And two, there was comments about these densities, um, maybe not working with the adopted CIP for the city. And so I was going to turn that over to the engineer, the city engineer, to address those comments.
Yes, thank you. Haley Hart, city engineer. So we do track our CIPs, our master plans. We have master plans for water, sewer, and our transportation network. I have very consistent coordination and communication with our three consultants that monitor our master plans. So if I do see a development that comes in that is of greater density than what our current comprehensive plan is, we let our consultants know that so that we make sure that we are properly monitoring our infrastructure systems in Caldwell. Looking at what the densities were envisioned in this comprehensive plan, it seems that there's not a significant change that would cause my self-concern. We certainly would, if this comprehensive plan is to be adopted, we would share these densities with our consultants to ensure that our planning areas for water, sewer, and transportation are not greatly impacted. And if they are greatly impacted, that's definitely something that we would update our CIPs to reflect.
Counselor, so, sorry, Counselor Stodick had his on them.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Staff, I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm just having a hard time comprehending when three of the county commissioners, they get elected on saving ag land, but yet they agree to go all the way out to Wagner. How did that develop, do you know, when you met with them? I mean, how did, how did they agree to Wagner versus Farmway?
Mayor and Counselor Stodick, because we're actually reducing our boundary. We actually, our current planning boundary goes out to Chicken Dinner. When we met with the county and we met with Development Services, they were actually glad to see that we were reducing our planning that extended almost to Wagner. And because our Public Works Department engineering has already master planned out in that area for utilities, they did not have a problem with it.
So they didn't show any objection at all to?
They did not. They did not.
That surprises me. And like I say, I hope people remember that when it comes time to vote because all three of them, you know, I've been here since 1977. I worked for Simplot, I have an ag background, but Farmway was always the borderline. You don't go any further west because of all the revenue that, you know, the seed company, the spud folks and the beet folks and everybody else, all the revenues that they generate to the state, but yet they, and I realize that you guys went out to Chicken Dinner, but I was just surprised that they still didn't stand their ground and say Farmway's it, don't go any further west, but they just, that was it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Doughty, then over to Counselor Dittenberg. Counselor Dittenberg.
First of all, staff, thank you very much. I'll have a question here in a couple of minutes. This is a, this is, this is difficult because we solicit input from the public and for whatever reasons, we don't get input from the public. And I'm always concerned about offering a little bit more time because we offer a little bit more time and the recommendations we consider tonight might change in a couple of weeks when we have a different group of 60 people come. And if we put it off another month, then we have not this group of people, then we have another group, and so we have even more people. And so I'm wondering, and here's the question before I have another couple of comments, is if we approve the plan this evening, which I'm leaning towards, can we finalize at a date certain, the zone boundaries? Can we come back in two weeks and go, okay, here are the boundaries because we want to take into consideration what Mr. Crookham and Mr. Moore had said? Can we do that? The other thing is, is all these things that you addressed, and I appreciate you addressing all the comments by, by the public, are we comfortable that we can address all of those in a thorough and lengthy code discussion? So two questions there.
Mayor and council, I think I can answer the first one maybe better than, than Robin, although she can hop in. If the council, I wouldn't recommend that you approve part of the comp plan and not another part. Because what the consequence of that will be is, if you were to, let's say, adopt a comprehensive plan but not the future land use map, there'd be some period of time when the new comp plan sands that the land use map was adopted and the old one persisted and then the new one was adopted. If that's what the objective is, I'd recommend that you just continue to a time and date certain, but then limit the scope of your conversation, two weeks, a month, whenever that is, to the one modification of the future land use map boundary for that particular area. What that would do is then oblige that the public comment also be specific to that one change. So you wouldn't have to open up the public hearing on the totality of the plan. It would be, we want to see in a month, the plan come back with the one change, that this boundary be moved one block east or whatever. And then you'd have to take public comment on, on that change, but the remainder would just be the public comment you've heard tonight. So I think that would be cleaner.
So then, let me, let me think about this here for like a split second. So I'll make a motion that we postpone the comprehensive plan to a date certain of no more than 30 days with the only discussion to be considered at the next meeting would be boundaries.
Yeah. So public testimony is closed, so do we need to get that specific on it since it's only really between staff on that? I mean, obviously you can, but does it?
Mayor and Counselor Dittenberg, I don't think it's harmful. I think the obligation to reopen the hearing is just a, is just a due process consideration by virtue of if there's new information, then the public has a right to now comment on that new information. And so if you continue to, and by time and date certain, we would need to be, we'd have to have a clerk guy or pull up the city council schedule and designate the specific date. There's nothing wrong with saying that it's for that particular purpose, just the way that the due process clause operates, what the public would be entitled to by default would be to comment on new information or changes, not on the totality of the plan.
Okay. I think we would need a date certain on that.
March 17th is great.
Okay, so that's a motion to continue it to March 17th with the specific clause of discussion on?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but we just asked the consultant if they could have that boundary changed by tomorrow so that we could make the next council meeting and they said yes.
Now I'm confusing myself or you're confusing me?
Sorry.
Okay. So, so I'll make a motion to postpone this until our next city council meeting.
Which would be February 17th.
Eighteenth.
That's six days.
February 17th.
Eighteenth.
Oh, sorry, yes, with the holiday, eighteenth, thank you.
With the only consideration beyond what we've done tonight is boundaries only.
So that is a motion. Let's see if we get a second on it. So we do have, okay. So then discussion.
Yes. So I'm not opposed to that, but there was more. There were lots and lots of people talking about looking at Neighborhood 2 to make sure that that was correct. So does that, what he proposes or made the motion for, does that mean we can't talk about that or how does? And then the other things too were, I think he left, but somebody was talking about allowing commercial on some of these other areas and I think that might have also been a Neighborhood 2 problem. So are we limiting ourselves from being able to have those discussions? That guy's not here anymore, right? He was talking something about allowing commercial down those bigger, I think Farmway is what he was talking about, right? Somebody nodded. Because that's not allowable right now, so are those, could we have that discussion as well?
Yes, so Mayor, Counselor Register, the, the, tonight you could make a modification to the boundary map, the one that's been proposed. You could move the line over and adopt the plan tonight. You could change the density in the, in the residential 2 from 6 to 4 tonight. You could change a map designation tonight. That's all fine. You also can do all those things at the next council meeting. So the limitation would just be if there's new evidence, which amended actual, like submitted map from the consultant with a different line would be a new piece of evidence and the public has a right to comment on that. So that's what will be limited is the public comment would be just on that portion. You would still be permitted to have the full, full conversation you're having now at that meeting, whatever concerns you have, whatever modifications you have. If during your deliberation, a new concern arises and you have to continue it for another two weeks, that would still be within, within your authority. So this does not limit your authority to do any of the things you're talking about. It just moves when the conversation happens to a week and a half away when you have one extra piece of evidence to talk about.
Okay. Because I'd like to, I would like to have the community weigh in on some of those other things too, like Neighborhood 2 and the commercial part that we were talking about on Farmway, if that's possible. But I don't, admittedly, I'm not a planner, right? So I understand that we can't do this today. I'd rather have a couple of weeks to just take a minute and talk to staff and make sure I understand it so that we're not rushing. And I think we've had two big projects in the last six months and we never just take a break and, you know, take a minute and say, okay, let's think about this. So I don't think two weeks is a long time. I just want to make sure I know what we can or cannot talk about or what we're going to bring back and talk about. And in the meantime, if it's limited, are we allowed to talk to the public or not? Just not about that stuff?
So Mayor, Counselor Register, the conversation, whatever happens after this night, you had your public hearing. The public that came, came. They provided testimony, they provided. The public testimony portion is closed. The only thing that would naturally open that back up is new evidence. And then whatever the public testimony was provided would be limited to that new piece of evidence. So there wouldn't be, the other things you're talking about, the public comment opportunity for those has gone, come and gone. This is a, comp plans are a little odd because they are under lupa, but they are legislative in nature. And I can, I can verify this tomorrow and, so you can, you can engage with this with competence, but my understanding is that comp plan amendments are legislative in nature, which means that you're permitted to talk to the public about them the same way you would a code change, even though they go through the ordinance hearing procedure like an application would. I can confirm that, to be doubly sure of that, but I believe that is the case. I don't think, hey, I don't have the code in front of me. I don't think comp plan modifications are subject to judicial review. I could be wrong about this. I could be 180 degrees off, but I can confirm that either one way or the other tomorrow. But if it is legislative, then you can talk to the public. If it's not, then you're limited to what the public provided tonight and I can get you certainty by tomorrow.
Mayor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to help address Counselor Register's comment. I thought I addressed that already, but I realized I probably didn't do a good job at doing it. In the Neighborhood 2, in the comp plan that we're proposing, it specifically states that the most prevalent place type is the Neighborhood 2 and that it would have, allow for a variety of housing options, like, you know, single-family and duplexes. It's less dense housing is found in areas further from major roadways. Commercial services are low to medium intensity and are located along major intersections of arterial and major collector roadways and should be highly accessible to surrounding residential areas. And when you go into the table, it specifically states that mixed use, commercial, retail, personal services, office is all supporting land uses in the Neighborhood 2. And in our codes that we will be bringing back, commercial services would be a permitted use in the Neighborhood 2 as long as they're located along those major intersections or fronting on major arterial roadways. So that is kind of already addressed in the comp plan, that commercial is allowed in those Neighborhood 2s to help support that residential. So I just wanted to try to re-clarify that.
Yep. So we do have a motion. This is to continue it for one week. So it'll be February 18th on that. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion passes. So that continues this item till one week from today. It'll be under old business, which is before the new business at the next council meeting. So you won't have to wait till the end of the meeting for that. It'll be the first item taken up after the consent calendar on that. So as we close, I just have a few comments if that's all right. I do want to express my appreciation to staff, to the consultants as well. This, I think we can all agree that this plan is extremely well done, whether you agree with it or disagree. I, I used to work in planning, I think as most people know, and the previous, previous, previous planning director, the last time, the comprehensive plan we have now was a lot of highlighters in his office, making marks and taking pictures and putting them together. So this is really very professionally done, one unlike that we've had before. So I do appreciate that. The comments that were given tonight were excellent. I want to say thank you to everyone for your professionalism. I appreciate it. I know that we did have that one moment and after that, everybody was great. And so I really do appreciate that. To keep the decorum of these meetings is very, very important and that, and we rely on all of you. And so we do appreciate that and taking the time to be here and know that your voices are hurt. And so look forward to continue those discussions. So with the public testimony portion closed, you are free. I would say with that, and I would agree with Mr. Waterman's assessment, but do have caution in your discussion with members. I know, I don't know if Chris agrees with this, but I hate it in the legislature, you would have two legislators that would literally leave the room, go talk outside, decide what they're going to do, and then come back in and vote. And it was totally legal, but it drove me crazy that they would do that. So just be aware of that and just, you know, keep transparency at the front, at the front of most importance. Staff is always available, so I'd recommend, especially those key players that had questions tonight, Mr. Crookham, reaching out to the Roberts and other business owners in that area, I think it'd be good to meet with them over this next. It's going to be a quick rush because it is a week away, but do everything that we can to meet with them and bring back some of those comments. So with that, this was the only item on the agenda this evening, so we now stand adjourned and thank you again.